I call this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, June 3 of 2025. It is 3:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, let's see who's here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
She's here, she's just getting IT help.
Yes. Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, we will start as we do. The citizen comment. The city council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign up process. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield your time to others. If you speak now about, oh, never mind. You'll have three minutes to speak when you state your name. We do need you to state your name. I know I just said it, but we want that in your voice for the recording. There's a timer. You'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you've got less than 20 seconds left, so wrap it up. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. "We will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, and threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel. I will ask you to leave the council chambers at that time. If you need help, we have our friendly officer here who can assist you in that." But this is your warning. There won't be one infraction, and I warn you, and you get to keep talking. This is your warning. So if there's an infraction, you'll be asked to leave. I will read all of our names that are going to be speaking in this order. So if you can be ready. Jack Thornton, Monty Parker, Randall Ruhl, Shannon Brown, Stephanie Korchak, John David Carson, and Max Field Baker. Couple of those folks may be online. Jack Thornton is first. Is Jack Thornton here? Okay. Monty Parker. Is he online? Okay, then we will hear Mr. Parker online. Is he there?
Okay, how about now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Very good, thank you.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I want to make a comment regarding the police department vehicles. I support our officers bringing their patrol unit home and off duty. It's always given me and all those I know some reassurance to have a law enforcement vehicle in the neighborhood, knowing that one of our neighbors is paid to protect and serve. And I also have to believe that it'd be a crime deterrent to have a cop car parked in your neighborhood. And it struck me as I'm kind of wondering why public works and other city vehicles were not brought into the same discussion, why it was just the police department that was targeted, but I guess there's a reason for that. So I just want to encourage you to continue supporting the policy. I think the cost is probably minimal, and I think the benefits are great. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Randall Ruhl. Shannon Brown. Stephanie Korchak.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Stephanie Korchak. Some of you may know that I'm a member of the chief's advisory panel, but I am speaking only on my behalf. My comments do not represent my colleagues on the panel, nor the panel as a whole. I really appreciate as a citizen, you're scrutinizing the budget. I know this is a very, very difficult budget year, and it's definitely appropriate that every line item should be up for discussion. I do think, however, that allowing our officers to take their vehicles home returns a great return on investment, not only, most importantly, for public safety and the ability to respond timely and with the appropriate equipment to incidents, as they are called, to go to those incidents, but also in terms of fleet maintenance. I had an incident two houses catty-corner from me last Wednesday. A shot was fired. I was working in my backyard with earbuds in, so I didn't hear it, but when I went to the front yard and saw people approaching and officers on scene, of course, I went into my home, but I saw the entire incident play out. Apparently, before I arrived, the target of the shot, if you will, was unharmed and escaped through a window. I saw a young man come out, and he was detained, but the officers didn't know if there was anyone else in the house. So for 30 minutes, I listened to them talk in Spanish, trying, one, to determine if anyone was inside, and, two, to get them to come out. Nothing happened. I now assume that that time period was for the drone unit to arrive, because they sent a drone into the house to look and see if anyone was there, to make sure anyone in the house was safe, but also to ensure the safety of the officers. After that search, the drone popped out, officers went in, and it turned out that no one else was in the house. If that drone unit and the officers that manage it were off-duty, as is often the case, they can jump into their car, they have their equipment, they can go straight to scene. If they have to go to the department to get their vehicle, that takes up valuable time. And we're talking about critical units like the drone unit, the negotiation team, the SWAT unit. These are life-saving measures, and time is of the essence. I happened to speak with a member of the drone unit, and he also indicated that because he quote-unquote "owns" the car, there's a level of accountability. He takes better care of it. He makes sure it's maintained. This is all good stuff. So I hope you will allow officers to keep taking those units home. Thank you.
Next speaker is John David Carson. There he is.
Mayor and council, John David Carson. I'm speaking regarding item 24 on tonight's agenda, authorizing the negotiations of a development agreement that would schedule the annexation of nearly 800 acres we own off Old Bass Drop and place at least half of it into open space zoning. My family has owned and operated this property as a cattle ranch for 25 years, but there has been steadily mounting development pressure. Among us, we have had various perspectives on long-term plans for the property, with some favoring continued agricultural use or conservation, and others wanting to evaluate other opportunities. For a decade, we have received frequent calls from eager residential developers and brokers. More than a year ago, we began receiving a slew of unsolicited offers for data center development. As you already know, data centers can bring substantial investment to a community while only placing limited demands on local services. But we appreciated from the start that there are a multitude of considerations and quickly recognized that not all companies and proposals were the same. As we reviewed the power transmission, data, and reclaimed water infrastructure already on our property, we felt we might be uniquely positioned to balance these attributes. We identified a portion of our property to consider the use and developed criteria for selecting a buyer. Since last July, we have been under contract with SABE data centers. In contrast to most, they design, develop, construct, own, and operate their data centers, and have been in this business for decades. Mark Noonan is Senior Vice President with SABE, and he will be here this evening. Mark is himself a Central Texan, having previously been at Data Foundry for more than 20 years. SABE Central Texas Experience, where water conservation is vital, was important to us, as was their primary focus on connecting to the grid. Their Round Rock campus already deploys innovative design strategies that minimize water consumption, such as closed-loop liquid cooling paired with air. Their demonstrated responsible water use there could be further enhanced by the potential use of reclaimed water line here for whatever uses remain. I should highlight that the alternative to a development agreement is an ETJ opt-out, but we have elected to start with this more holistic plan. The draft conceptual land use plan stipulates the data center campus directly, or situates directly abutting the existing Hayes Energy Plant for compatibility. It also zones nearly 400 acres CD1 open space, in line with the goals of the city's comprehensive plan. We have no immediate plans for the remainder, other than continuing our ranching operation, but we would annex it immediately, such that it would be subject to city standards in perpetuity. We look forward to beginning discussions with the city. Mark and I will be available this evening if you have any initial questions. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Max Field Baker. Is he online, Mr. Trevino? Okay.
Sorry, I'm having a little technical issue. I think I got it figured out. All right, can you all see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So again, my name is Max Field Baker. I want to start by acknowledging that with all the issues we're dealing with regarding police and development and all these things, it's really difficult for those of us working in the nonprofit slash community advocacy roles to fight every battle. You know, here I am, working with the San Marcos Civics Club, leading up an effort to push for a tenants' bill of rights, and I consistently feel like my ability to also advocate for police accountability, you know, going against the flock cameras, the AI data center, I feel like every time we speak out against those, we potentially lose a good idea to a disagreement with some of the elected officials that are representing us up there. So I just hope that as we navigate these different issues, you all can professionally separate our advocacy or opposition to certain issues, separate from our advocacy for our tenants' bill of rights. To that end, the San Marcos Civics Club has reached out to the mayor, council member Lorenzo Gonzalez, and Amanda Rodriguez, as well as city staff, to ask that you all begin to join us in a fight to push for a right to organize ordinance. We sent you earlier today information regarding work that's been done in Austin. You've previously seen work that's been done in San Antonio. We're formally requesting meetings with you all, so that we can move that issue forward. Separate from that, you know, I wanted to speak, again, not related to the civics club, about this police vehicle. In particular, I feel like there's not enough attention around this secondary employment issue. It'd be nice if you all considered the impact on response times when officers are pursuing secondary employment. It's also not lost on me that a lot of the secondary employment is related to policies that require officers for things like parades, when instead, we don't need people with guns and badges there, but probably a non-civil service employee would suffice. So are there policies that would reduce the need for officers at different kinds of events, you know, parades or funeral lines, things like that, where they're just simply blocking traffic? Also, I would ask that with all the different boards and commissions that you all serve on, that you all do a better job of informing the public what is discussed at those by agendizing city council items, where you tell us what's happening at the Economic Development, San Marcos Forum, the different CAPCOG organizations, and ARWA. We've seen a lot of interest in better understanding what our boards and committees and regional partnerships are doing, and I think it's incumbent on city council to prioritize time during your public recorded meetings that garner more public attention, including news press and things like that, so that you can keep us abreast of these changing relationships, especially.
And I'm going to ask one more time for Jack Thornton, Randall Ruhl, or Shannon Brown, if they're here. Perhaps we'll see them at the 6 o'clock. Okay, then that concludes citizen comment. Ms. Trevino, would you read the information about our first presentation, please?
Receive a stop presentation on fiscal year 2026 capital improvements program as contained within the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This presentation provides an overview of the fiscal year 2026 capital improvements program and handoff the draft CIP for council review. This agenda item is an opportunity for public transparency of the FY 2026 capital improvements program projects. I am proud of Sean's willingness to step the public through these projects and present this information at various community meetings. I'll now turn it over to Director of Engineering CIP, Sean Condor, to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Condor.
As a reminder of what the capital improvements program is, it's a long-range plan and schedule for capital projects and system assets. It identifies workload for departments, as well as funding needs for the cities and potential financing options the city can pursue. It is a planning tool first, so year one is the only year which is actually approved in the budget, where years two through 10 are really placeholders for planning purposes. So what is the CIP project? It's a major capital project, generally involves a significant expenditure of funds beyond operation and maintenance costs for the acquisition or construction of a needed facility or infrastructure. The total project cost should exceed $100,000, and it should tie to a long-term asset. Projects come all over, but typically it's through master plans, operation requests, council direction, or citizen input. When you think about the lifecycle of a project, the part of the number-one complaint is it takes too long. Why does it take so long? Well, this slide just tries to help put some timelines into perspective. And so a simple project is something that's typically in the $200 to $1 million range, and we're talking about a three- to four-year process. From the time we start the project means it's approved for funding until it's completed. A complex project is typically in the $1 million to $10 million range, and that's about a five-to-seven-year window typically. And a very complex project is typically over $10 million, and it's easily over eight to 10 years plus. One thing to consider when you talk about the CIP is the last year is always for construction, and we always program best-case scenario. And as challenges arise as we go through the process, then we delay funding. It's much easier to delay than to move something up, because there's other things in the queue. So that's why you'll see things get pushed out a lot as other things come up. It's challenges arise that force us to delay it. When you talk about the funding sources of the capital improvements program, it's through the general fund, through property and sales tax, as well as license permits. The stormwater fund is funded through the stormwater utility fee. The electric fund is through electric rates. The water wastewater fund is through water wastewater rates and impact fees, and we do get some external funding through grants and outside sources. And when you look at the CIP schedule, it's a long process. It's typically a two-year process from start to actually finish, but it starts in the fall, we prepare the draft CIP, and then in February to May timeframe, we take the draft CIP to the Neighborhood Commission one time, the PNZ three times, and then we take it to council one time. Then we go through the budget process, and we formally adopt it with the budget in September. And again, that's just approving the list, but then you got to go through funding the CIP, and that hits the next fiscal year, where you'll see the debt sale come forward in the spring, and then we'll actually get the funding in the summer of 2026. And what I'm trying to say there is, from the time we start the CIP to the time we actually have money to spend on those, it's an 18-month window. It's a long time. And then, of course, the first payment is October 2026, and that's just telling you that, hey, this CIP impacts next year's budget, is what that's saying. When you look at the FY 2026 CIP specifically, right now, we're at 11.2 million in general fund. We've got about 6.8 million in stormwater funding. Water wastewater is about 86.9 million, and electric is 10 million, for a total of 115 million. I will note that the stormwater fund is going to cover up the 5 million. Anything in excess of that would have to be covered by the general fund. And then the majority of that water wastewater is associated with a developer agreement for a second wastewater treatment plant, the 1978 recomulation facility, and so that's being funded through that agreement for the most part. Recent successes, the Blanco Gardens neighborhood, the Blanco Riverine, and the Sesamo Creek stabilizations are three projects recently completed in the last year or so. Big projects in the future, we have the Sunset Acres subdivision, the Wallace addition improvements, the Bishop Belvin improvements, a Dyche shared-use path connection is a big one, and then the 1978 water recomulation facility. And of course, Kissin Alley is a big one that should start here in the next year. The CIP book, traditionally, we've always had a CIP book. It's for those folks who want to have a nice hard copy, but it's got a layout of the manual, and you can see how the CIP is operated, list of the projects, and the maps, and all that good stuff. But we also have a CIP interactive map. And so for those of you, they say the same information, so it's just a matter of what's your preference. The map does have a few alternatives, some filters, that you can maybe find some information a little bit quicker. I believe I saw a question on the message board about bond projects and what you can do on this interactive map. For example, you can go down there, and you can filter that toggle for the bond project, and it'll tell you which projects have bond funding associated with it. Or if you want to see a certain year or a certain fund, you can use those filters to kind of figure out what's what and what's getting funded. And there's an option where you can actually print the PDF sheet, which is in the CIP book as well. So understanding the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet's kind of like the meat of the CIP document. It's like seven, eight pages, I believe. Sometimes the color coding could throw people off, so I didn't want to take a second to explain that. And so really, the brown is what we identify as TURS funding projects, and that means that project would be eligible for TURS funding if it was approved by the TURS board. We highlight the projects in pink, saying that are impact fee eligible, and then the ones that are blue are ones that staff has identified as potential future bond projects. And then, of course, there might be some white, some gray sprinkled in there. That's just really just to help read that really wide, long spreadsheet. So there's talk of a bond election project. As of today, we're estimating roughly $200 million, with about $175 million of that in general fund, and about 20 to 25 million in stormwater. The schedule, if we continue previous direction, is to continue to update design and costs. We have good numbers in place by 2027. We're going to be seeking that direction during visioning in 2028. If we're given that direction to proceed, then the goal will have a bond committee formed in 2028, one year before the election, and then the bond election would occur in 2029, with the project starting immediately. And so when you look at the CIP spreadsheet, we've kind of identified some funding there on the 26 and 27. That's what we need to really get our project costs updated. How much is it going to cost to do this particular project? Because we don't want to go forward and approve a project, and all of a sudden, no, we need twice as much as we thought we needed. So we want to get some form of design in place, and then the amounts is on the far right. I will note, if you look at that bond election amount, it's really for general and storm only. If there's water, wastewater, or electric, or water wastewater, electric, or, I'm missing one, water, wastewater, electric, it will be funded with that utility rate. So. Last off, we took the PNZ last month, and they came back and recommended the CIP to council with no amendments. The next steps were really to hand off the CIP to council, let folks know, hey, this is what we think is going to happen in 2026. There's a copy of it in the packet. We always have our interactive website, if you want to see that as well. We'll go through the budget policy workshop, and then in August, we'll come back with the final CIP. And that's just in case something that comes to the budget workshop that we have to tweak, maybe the funding didn't go as anticipated, and we had to cut some projects. That just gives us that opportunity to make any final tweaks, and we typically don't make those projects, but there could be a few, depending on how the workshops go. And then it'll formally be adopted in September with the budget itself. So with that, I'll finish on this slide. This is the location of the CIP. We have a digital copy and interactive map on the website. If you want a hard copy, you can get it at the library or in our department, and a QR code there if you'd like to scan and get quicker access to it. So with that, I'll pause for questions.
Questions from anyone? Same process that we've been using for a long time.
Yeah, every year I do the same presentation.
Yeah, yes, and we appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing else here, good presentation. Covered the waterfront for us, thank you. And let's go on to item two, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a presentation regarding the police department's take-home vehicle program, and receive a presentation and provide feedback regarding a proposed fleet surcharge for police vehicles used for secondary employment.
Ms. Reyes.
Mayor and council, on April 1, 2025, council expressed a desire to have a work session regarding a surcharge for police fleet usage during secondary employment. I do want to clarify that there had been discussion even before that. At a subsequent discussion, this request was broadened to include a review of the police department's take-home vehicle program. Our intention for this update is to provide information that helps answer any questions you may have. The department's program has been in use since 1983. It is a nationally recognized recruiting retention strategy that is used across Texas and the nation. Take-home vehicles optimize accountability, length of service, and durability of each assigned vehicle, reduce the physical footprint at an already crowded police station, and provide direct operational impacts when officers respond to in-progress calls while commuting to or from home. I'll now turn it over to Police Chief Standridge to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Stan Standridge. I serve as the police chief. A lot of work by staff went into this presentation. For that, I'm very thankful for the staff. I just hope I can honor you by walking through this with the fidelity that it deserves. Hayden, if you could put the PowerPoint up. There it is, got it. Thank you. All right, so this is a two-fold presentation. The first one is I'm going to provide everybody an awareness of the police department's use of take-home vehicles. And then the second issue is I'm going to formally seek guidance from the city council on a proposed fleet surcharge related to police secondary employment. First, let's tackle take-home vehicles. I learned a lot in this process, working with staff, trying to understand the historical pieces of many moving pieces, and I have learned that the take-home vehicle program has been in existence since 1983, specifically October 31st. And then there were no substantive changes until 2016, when the, I'll start with number two, the take-home radius was changed to 15 miles. And then the first one that's stipulated on the slide is the city of San Marcos transitioned to the leasing program for unmarked cars. And then the only other substantive change was in 2023, and that's when Enterprise allowed us to bring in our, what's called, pursuit-rated vehicles into the lease program. And so if the fiscal general fund can sustain it, then ideally, we would want all future vehicle purchases to be done through the lease program, and the good news is that it's now inclusive of our patrol-rated vehicles. So I'm going to cover five broad issues regarding take-home vehicles. I'm going to cover community impact, operational efficiency, financial considerations, callouts, and then I'll conclude with accountability. When I say community impact, does the take-home program, having visible police units, have any type of impact? Is there a deterrent factor? I want to say unequivocally that I do not believe, nor does the San Marcos Police Department believe, that the police department is the causal factor for the recent reductions in crime. But I do believe we are a causal factor in the reduction of crime. I think council, mayor, everybody would recognize that there are many factors that go into crime, associated with economy, associated with education. All of those are causal factors. So with that said, I know that we have had many conversations, when I say "we," police administration and the city council, as it relates to the efficacy of the San Marcos Police Department. Is what the San Marcos Police Department doing, does it actually have an impact on the crime and/or the crime statistics? So we did a deep dive. First, I went to the academic literature. DEDAX, which is an acronym that stands for Data Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety, was formally adopted by your police department in 2022, in addition to intelligence-led policing. You have heard me say, if we say, if we give officers random expectations, we will get random results. So in 2022, we became very focused and very intentional in how we actually police the city. So DEDAX was actually adopted in 2022. Why? I'm going to share these two quotes. "The research in this report demonstrates that both crashes and crime are spatially clustered and can be affected by police visibility and contacts." Second quote, "This model affords communities the dual benefit of reducing traffic crashes and crime in the same area, thus reducing overall social harm." Now, I would like to be able to quantify at every opportunity, and so I asked our analysis unit, can you look at the years that we have collectively, we as in the city council and city administration and police administration, been discussing crime? Specifically, we have looked at 2022, we've looked at '23, and we've looked at '24, and we've had lots of conversations. And you all have heard me consistently say that the city of San Marcos has experienced significant reductions in crime in '23 and in '24, most notably in violent crime. A point of feedback, and I received the feedback, is, well, that may be true for the city of San Marcos, but it's also correlating true for the state of Texas. So nothing really special happened in San Marcos, because you actually experienced the same delta in the state of Texas. So I asked the analysis unit, can you approve or disprove that? I believe council was provided this report by Chief Anderson. For the benefit of our community, I'll share just a very brief portion. And I quote from this memorandum conducted by the analysis unit. "San Marcos experienced a deeper drop in all offenses, 27% from 2022 to 2024, compared to 7% experienced from all reporting Texas agencies, and a deeper drop in violent offenses." And a deeper drop in violent offenses, 46% from 2023 to 2024, compared to 11% experienced across the state of Texas. Additionally, while violent crime was at an all-time high in San Marcos in 2022, the state of Texas reported a reduction in violent crime in 2022." So I offer this analysis for the point of illustrating that I believe what we are doing, and we as the correct pronoun, we as in the community, as in the council, as in city administration, police administration, and everybody here, both sworn and professional staff, what we are doing is a causal factor. All right. As it relates to operational efficiency, again, we're looking at it from a community perspective. How does this benefit or not benefit the community is the threshold question. So we're going to look at two functions. We're going to look at ancillary duties, and we're also going to look at call-out necessity. Now, ancillary is defined as providing necessary support of the primary activities or operation of an organization. I am very thankful that we have men and women, both sworn and professional staff, because they're both in this mix, who do ancillary duties. In other words, those duties are above and beyond their normal 40-hour work week. They could opt just to come to work, get a paycheck, and go home, but they don't. They do the extras. I'll name the extras. We have the Office of Professional Conduct. So we have a commander and three investigators who do internal affairs investigations. We have K-9. We have SWAT. Within SWAT, we have a crisis negotiations team. They had a remarkable success last night. We have drones. We have robotics. Those are examples of ancillary duties. Couple that with those within the department who are subject to call-outs. Again, as an example, last night, and again even this morning. So we give you some numbers. We have a total of 79 employees with call-out requirements, of which seven are professional staff. I'm going to quote this. These are, and I'll be brief, and I'll be quick, but these are actual testimonials from officers who were in transit, home, or coming back. And I offer this because I think it's relevant. The question should be asked by me and by all of you. Are officers, when they're going home in their take-home vehicle, or when they're coming to work in their take-home vehicle, are they actually listening to the radio and being responsive to in-progress calls? I think it's a fair question. I ask the exact same question of my staff. Can you give me specific incidents where this has actually played out? I don't want to get up here and just be a mouthpiece. I want to know, give me the specifics. And so that's what I'm going to share with you and with our community. And I quote, "After completing an off-duty job at Bobcat Quickie, the Miz-A supervisor asked if I could provide additional support to patrol. I agreed to stay over and assist with a high volume of calls for service. It was an especially busy weekend with a significant number of calls requiring attention. This is because this occurred in December in conjunction with the graduation at college." Second. "I was heading home, going south on Interstate Highway 35 after a long shift on Eves just after 4:00 a.m. I observed a vehicle driving the wrong way on the interstate after at least two cars rapidly swerved to avoid a head-on collision just north of the TA truck stop. I activated my emergency light, swerved across 35 to warn several 18-wheelers behind me, and stopped on the shoulder until the wrong-way driver passed. Traffic was light enough for me to turn my marked unit around and stop the violator. New Braunfels Police Department in Kamal County arrived shortly after and arrested the driver for driving while intoxicated. She apparently had entered the highway somewhere around Highway 46 and was heading to San Marcos, highly intoxicated. While working traffic control at Amazon, a major crash occurred on McCarty Lane with injury. Responded directly to crash, arriving 10 seconds after it occurred, provided aid, investigated the crash, and completed the crash report from my vehicle while still working extra duty, saving the city the cost of me doing that report during my normal hours and clearing the roadway significantly faster." Two females robbed Fuego in town. At 2:47 p.m., officers located the suspect vehicle heading southbound on 35 Access Road. I was on my way to training, traveling on FM 1102, also known as Hunter Road, and heard the call on the radio. I cut across on York Creek Road and was able to join in what turned into be a pursuit with the suspects. I became the number-two unit. The suspect vehicle wrecked out in construction, and the female suspects fled on foot. I was able to give chase, and both suspects were successfully taken into custody. New Braunfels Police Department was in a pursuit northbound into our jurisdiction and was requesting assistance. I'll just fast-forward. Because the officer intervened, they were able to end that pursuit. Almost done. Second to the last one. "I was assigned to Eves A when a call for service populated at Red Room Social Lounge. The call populated at the end of my shift, and I was traveling home in my take-home vehicle. It was a physical disturbance wherein the victim was unconscious. I was able to turn around as I was traveling home, go to the scene, interview the suspect, many witnesses, collect valuable video surveillance recording, and collaborate with the on-call detective and the evidence unit. The victim died as a result of his injuries, and the suspect was arrested for manslaughter." Final testimonial. "At approximately 5:49 a.m., I was on my way to shift briefing and saw a 911 open line call come in. The call notes indicated there was a shooting, and the caller had a video. I was self-assigned to the call and immediately arrived. Upon arrival, there was a subject detained, but it was unknown whether he was the shooter. Additionally, the location of the firearm was unknown. I began canvassing the area to assist in the investigation. Another officer called out that he located the firearm, in a field behind one of the buildings. I photographed its location and waited until the crime scene unit was able to collect it. Video of the shooting successfully identified the detained subject shooting the firearm into the air several times and attempting to hide the firearm once officers were on scene." Again, Mayor and Council, I just offer those as anecdotal stories. I have many, many more. But for the purposes of honoring your time today, I will forego those. And now I want to focus on the third area of concern, and that is financial considerations. The San Marcos Police Department currently has 164 parking spots. That's our starting point. We then have to deduct five for disabled parking. We have an additional 18 reserved for public parking. And then we have 49 that are reserved for training, fleet, auction, or specialized vehicles, or all the above. And I can explain what those are in greater detail if necessary. So the analysis unit then looked to determine how many actual employees, at a max time period, which is typically going to be your Monday through Friday, eight to five, how many would be on duty? And the answer was 122 daytime employees. I reached out to Charlotte Lund, and she remembers she is our VIP coordinator. And I asked her, how many active volunteers do you have? The response is, I have 40 to 45 volunteers, but I have 25 who are active. Active being defined as they're coming in every week. And then we obviously, we host trainings. Our conference room will typically hold 50 comfortably, up to 70 max. We host trainings frequently there. And so we believe conservatively, the delta, the deficiency, is 215 spots would need to be constructed at the San Marcos Police Department if all fleets were parked instead of going home. Complicating that issue is I reached out to Director Sean Condor, and I asked him the question, is there any additional opportunity for paving at the San Marcos Police Department? And the answer is no. There is no opportunity for additional impervious area. Now, Councilwoman Rodriguez, I know two weeks ago you asked the question, are there anything, anything coming before the council that still remain as a need associated with the police department? Fair question. I want to be transparent with all of you. The only need related to the renovation of the police department, which we consider done, was the repaving of the parking lot. That parking lot, we occupied the police department, according to Chief Clatt, in 1991. That parking lot has significant structural integrity issues. It needs to be repaved. The issue for us was we did not have the $400,000 in that renovation budget to do it. So I just want to make you aware that, and I put that kind of in so you can see a benchmark cost. If we were to repave existing parking spots for the 164, you're looking at about $400,000. That's probably two years ago. The issue for us is there's absolutely zero area to do further build out. All right, let me say, before I go on to the next slide, let me explain hot swapping. I know that's been asked. So right now, officers and some professional staff have assigned vehicles. When the officer first joins the department, they don't immediately get an assigned vehicle. They have to go through a mini-academy. They have to complete their field training program. That in and of itself is 26-ish weeks long. But upon successful completion, if they are assigned a take-home vehicle, that assigned vehicle, if it's in the lease program, is a five-year lease. If it's an outright purchase, it's going to depend upon the mileage. So that's the baseline. Let's look at what we currently have. We have a take-home program. Let's assume they're all leased, five years. If the direction of the council says, no, 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 we're not going to do take-homes anymore. You're going to somehow figure out where to park all of these cars, then we couldn't. I've already established that. We don't have enough spots to actually park in. So what you'd have to do is you'd have to adopt what's called a hot swap program. What's a hot swap program? So I'll take Bob as an example. Let's say I work the day shift. My shift is a 12-hour shift. I come in. I go into the police department, and I'll have a huge board with all keys, and I'll check out a car. I will then go out to the car, and I will actually do a vehicle inspection. It's a long vehicle inspection. I have the vehicle inspection right here. This is as long as it is. And I know for the benefit of the community, they cannot see this. But when I go through this vehicle inspection, I'm looking at the equipment. I'm looking at the operations. I'm looking at the condition. I'm looking at the fluid levels. I'm checking the firearms inside the vehicles. I'm doing a check on my body camera, my fleet camera. All of that has to be checked. So if I were to do that at the beginning of my shift, I'm then going to drive that vehicle. It's going to take me about a half an hour to dawn the vehicle. It's what we call it, dawning and dophying. I'm going to dawn my vehicle. It's going to take me a half hour to get done. I then drive my vehicle for the length of my shift. And then when I come in, it's going to take me 30 minutes to exit out of that process. And then I'm going to hand the vehicle to Bob, and he's going to literally do the exact same thing I did, and he's going to drive it for the next 11 hours. That's a hot swap. Why is it hot? Because the vehicle is running 24/7. So remember, the baseline is we have five years currently with the lease program. If we did a hot swap program, your vehicles have to be replaced every three years. So I know y'all think we're buying a lot of vehicles now. If we do hot swap, we're going to buy almost probably double the number of vehicles. Because your vehicles are going to be driven literally 24 hours at a time, and it's going to have to be replaced at $100,000. So your maintenance cost will go up, and we'll need additional full-time employees because everything is going to go up associated with a hot swap.
That's presuming that the cars will be shared.
Correct.
Because when I asked my question, I was not assuming that the cars would be shared.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, what Ms. Garz and I have been chatting about up here. How many versions of this presentation are there? What she has made her notes on has apparently either a different order or maybe some different slides? Was maybe there a different one in Ledger Star?
I haven't changed this since whatever was given Friday.
Okay.
I don't know where Hayden is. This was given Friday. There was one slide that Hayden and I changed, and I'll show you what it is, but I haven't changed anything since Friday.
All right. So it's just her notes are in a certain order.
Got it.
And so that's what we've been trying to figure out up here. But we were listening.
All right.
And I think that's where she's gone to figure out what's going on.
Okay. All right. Another aspect of financial considerations is we have to contemplate weather. Let's start with hail. You all probably remember in May 2024, we had a large hailstorm come through. It damaged 80 vehicles. Mayor, this is the only slide I've changed since Friday, and Hayden and I did this probably 30 minutes ago. The only thing I changed on this slide was where it says the city of San Marcos paid $1,000 vehicle to repair damage. It now correctly says city of San Marcos will pay $1,000 per vehicle to repair damages. Why? I don't, I didn't even realize this. The city of San Marcos lost its catastrophic event coverage in October of 2024 for fleet, associated with hail claims. We've had so many hail claims at such a high cost that Mandy Ryski communicated to us, specifically Sergeant Ames, and he sent me the email, that we no longer have catastrophic event coverage for fleet associated with hail damage.
That was a decision we made, or the insurance company just dropped it and it's not an option anymore?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is we, can we get Fleet to kind of explain? It's changed in the sense that we could pay one deductible is what I was aware of. That we can pay one deductible for multiple vehicles, but now it's like a one-to-one ratio. So now we have to pay the deductible for each vehicle that is damaged. So that's, that's the change. And TML made that. That wasn't a decision that we could change, that we could protest.
Yep. So Pete Benin, Assistant Director of Public Works, city manager is correct. Essentially, after the May 9th hailstorm, we had in excess of 150 vehicles damaged. And we paid a, our deductible was only $25,000 under the previous policy. When the policy renewed October 1st, they carved out just hail, just hail where it's changed. So now, if we have hail damage to say 100 vehicles, and we decide to move forward with repairing each vehicle, the city would have to pay $100,000 in deductibles. It'd be $1,000 per vehicle. So it's going to change the calculus of how we look at hail damage. We're going to have to assess it more closely in the future because we're going to need to find out if the juice is worth the squeeze on the repair itself, given that we're going to have to pay $1,000 per vehicle. Does that help?
Yes. Thank you.
May I ask what changed, though, in that particular, I'm seeing a change in the bullet structure, but what, what changed on the under-hail?
Yes, ma'am. Under-hail, it had previously said that the city of San Marcos paid $1,000 per vehicle to repair damages.
I see.
It did not in May 2024, but it will for any subsequent hail claims.
So if I could have Fleet come back? So let's use an example, because you said you used the analogy, if the juice is worth the squeeze. That picture to the right, on the bottom right corner, I see dents. Is that worth the squeeze?
Yes.
It is. So did TML give us that threshold on like what level of damage is?
No, ma'am. We'll have to make that assessment ourselves in-house. But it's not just dings to the vehicles. You have broken windshields. You have broken lights.
Oh, I understand that completely. I was just wondering if it was small dents, if that would be a justifiable use to go out and do a claim?
It really would just depend on the vehicle, you know. It's hard to say. I mean, this is pretty new to us. We haven't had any hail damage since then, so we really don't have a test case. I don't have anything that I could offer as a, as a hard and fast rule or example. We're still working through that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second item, as it relates to flood. I did not know this because this preexisted me, but when it has flooded in the city of San Marcos, it has literally bifurcated. It has split the city because the floodwaters go over the frontage and interstate lanes. And I learned from Chief Winkenwerter, the lived experience in San Marcos is, you had fleet units stuck on the north side, you have fleet units stuck on the south side, and there was no exchange because it was impassable. Hopefully, that is going to be rectified with the changes in text dot, but I point that out really to lead to this slide. This was last week. And the graphics don't really show up well on these projectors, but you can see, we received two inches of rain. I think that slide says May 28th. We received two inches of rain, and the front of the police department is impassable after only two inches. I asked Chief Clatt earlier, how much rain did you receive in 2015? He pulled it up, and the city of San Marcos experienced 10 to 13 inches of rain locally. Your police department cannot sustain 10 to 13 inches because we're going to, we're going to hopefully be an island if it doesn't go underwater. I learned from City Manager Reyes that that is the reason the Emergency Operations Center was actually relocated out of the police department. I did not know that. Pre-public service complex, the EOC was at the police department, and you all made a conscious decision that that's not a good place because admittedly, the police department is not in a good place. And I think this video is worth a thousand words, so I'll just let it speak for itself. All right. Talk about call-outs. We already talked about ancillary duties, and we need to talk about call-outs. I think it's important for the community to know that it's rooted in policy. Officers are always subject to duty. Officers shall always respond to the lawful orders of supervisors and to the call of individuals in need of police assistance. The fact that they may be off-duty... The fact that they may be off-duty shall not relieve them from the responsibility of being recalled to duty as needed. So, as it relates to callouts, the analysis unit did a lot of dive, a, a deep dive on this, and they discerned that in twenty-twenty-four alone, SWAT and Crisis Negotiations Team had forty-six callouts. Drones had twenty-three, robotics had nineteen, K-9 had eighty-one. Victim Services, which are two professional staff not sworn, had ten. The Collision Investigation Team, that is the team that investigates the fatality accidents in the City of San Marcos, they had thirteen. Crime Scene Investigators, those are your four professional staff employees who do crime scene investigations alongside the detectives, had fourteen callouts. And then, there's an asterisk next to the detectives. It says twenty-one. Those are twenty-one after-hours callouts. They had an additional eight that started during the daytime, when they were already at work, but went much later. All right, so, what does this translate to? How does this have a fiscal impact for council to consider? Well, the number of employees, let's just take SWAT as an example. Forty-six callouts. We have eighteen people contributing to that SWAT callout. If they were to respond from home, not have a take-home vehicle, they drive their, uh, what's called POV, personally-owned vehicle, to the PD. They go in, they do the process of what I talked about. They have to check out a vehicle, they have to do the inspection. Then, they have to transfer all their equipment from their POV, personally-owned vehicle, into their fleet. We estimate conservatively, that will take a half hour to dawn. It's going to take a half hour to doff, because otherwise, you've got to, you've got to return the vehicle, and you've got to turn all that stuff back in. At one hour, per employee, our fiscal year cost, just for those callouts alone with SWAT, is estimated to be twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
That's just for the extra hour?
Yes, ma'am. Just for the extra hour. Now then, the average miles driven. I didn't fully understand this, but Patty Hopp, Analyst Supervisor, she's here today. She explained to me, Chief, this is the distance that they di- then had to drive from the PD to the crisis site. So, that's the additional time, and I know Stephanie Korcheck, a member of the community, spoke about how crucial time is when we're going to these hot calls. So, those are the additional miles that would have been driven, which ultimately translates into additional time. Do you have a question?
Oh, not unless the mayor's done.
Okay. Sorry.
Uh, I, I now have a question afterwards.
Of the people in the blue.
Of the people in what?
The people, the, the employees on the blue, the blue side, not the green. Um, you're, am I reading this document correctly when it's talking about servicing Hayes County? Does Hayes County supplement any of these funding?
Hayes County probably has an equal contribution. So, it is a, it is a combined response team. It's the Hayes County SWAT team. So, Hayes County has twelve billets, twelve positions. We have twelve billets, twelve positions. Same thing with negotiators, same thing with drones, robotics.
Okay, let's focus on SWAT, uh, SWAT, just for the sake of the, the example. Um, so, are, are people who are SWAT officers in our department, are they still Hayes County employees, as they've been historically?
They're not. They are our employees.
They're city now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, but we're half and half, right?
We are.
Some, some are city and some are sheriff's department.
Right, it's a combined team.
That makes up the team. Okay.
Okay. So, the half that are county, does the county pay for all of the things associated with their service?
They do. These are just our theoretical costs for the one hour to dawn and doff, if they did not have that take-home vehicle.
I understand that.
Right.
The, the, the gist of what I'm trying to get at is, what is the county doing to supplement this cost, and how much?
The county would probably put a tick mark on everything we're doing, because they're doing the exact same thing.
But they're paying it for their employees.
Correct.
And we're sharing half and half the cost, but they're not paying for anything that we're doing.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we're not paying for anything they're doing.
Because the vehicles they're using are paid for by whom?
The vehicles they're using is paid for by the county, because they are personally assigned.
Okay.
They have take-home vehicles. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, that was the whole gist of what I was trying to get at.
Perfect.
Uh, my question is, does everybody listen to the radio the entire time that they're in a city vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you talking about even going, the commuting to and from?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. So, I, earlier, I talked about the vehicle inspections. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this. I just wanted you to know that, um, it's rooted in policy. There's a specific process. It has to be done currently with take-home vehicles. It has to be done on a quarterly basis. It actually is, uh, supervised by a corporal, and the entire thing is recorded on body worn cameras. So, that vehicle inspection is a very formal process of what we do. The reason being is, that is a personally-assigned vehicle. It's yours. Remember, we talked about that five-year lease? You take care of what's personally assigned to you, because you know you have it for five years, versus the hot swap world where anybody could drive that vehicle. Nobody cares. All right. As it relates to accountability, and I'll conclude with these, this is my final broad objective. We've talked a lot about accountability, as we should. The Event Review Board ensures greater review consistency across the organization and makes training and policy recommendations. The department will protect the community trust by preventing misconduct, avoiding and/or mitigating police mistakes, and reducing the use of force to accomplish lawful objectives. So, I put this in here just as a reminder. The Event Review Board is a standing committee that meets every month. It's comprised of San Marcos Police Department and City of San Marcos Risk Management, Mandy. They review all uses of force, all pursuits, all crashes, and all significant events that result in injuries. It's a very, very busy committee. All right. This next part is relates, relates to comparison cities. I think you all should be able to make informed decisions, and so, you need comparative data, because everything is relative. First, a note. The City of, the, the San Marcos Police Department did not choose the comparator cities. I didn't actually know how they were chosen, but I have since learned that they were chosen during a director's team meeting in twenty-twenty-three, and the criteria for choosing was this. That they consist of both local and regional cities in the City of San Marcos recruitment area, and they are like-type cities. What is a like-type city? A lot of this information was provided by city management, so I appreciate their help. It needs to be a comparable size, demographics, a university community, municipally owned, and you can see the three things that are listed there, and then ultimately, that we compete for recruitment. So, these are the comparator cities that were used for the comp and classification study. They're also the ones that are used for beat and confer. With that said, I say all of that just to lead you to this slide. Here are what our comparator cities are doing. The lowest is Round Rock at twelve miles. The largest, depending on the size of the county, is Bryan, and they do anywhere in this, uh, Brazos County. You can see that everybody else is between fifteen and thirty miles. Okay? All right, so, what are the numbers? How many are we talking? There are currently one hundred and eight take-home vehicles. We believe that based upon a round trip home, so, the veh- the, the officer is his or her shift, they drive home, they drive back, round trip to the city limits as the crow fly, for all one hundred and eight vehicles, with fuel costs as dated May second of twenty-twenty-five, would have cost the city twenty-four thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. We then gave Council and Mayor additional breakdown as it relates to where do the officers live? I should say where do officers and professional staff live? You can see that fifty-nine percent live within five miles. Twenty-eight live within ten, and only sixteen would live within the fifteen-mile radius. All right. Which leads us to this point, where I need formal guidance from council. And we're going to talk about secondary employment, and I'm just going to apologize from the onset that this has taken so long. Councilwoman Rodriguez, Chris, Chris, and Councilwoman Garza and I have had many conversations about this topic. I'm sensitive to this topic. I know she is too. I apologize for taking, taking so long to get this across the goal line, but I think we are here based upon your feedback today.
Can we go back a couple of slides back?
Put on your microphone and...
Can we go back a couple of slides back? I have a couple of questions on the drones. Are those ours, or is it ours in the counties?
We have our own drones. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The county has theirs as well.
Because we bought one time back. It was supposed to be for the county and the city.
That may be a long time ago, but we've got our own.
Yeah.
Can we pull up the slide, though, for the people watching?
And the robots are also ours?
The robot is a, a joint ownership through CapCog. That, that's a very expensive... Uh, Hayden, if you know which slide it is, is this it? Okay. The robotic, the robot, is a shared asset granted through CapCog funding, ultimately is federal funding. Drones belong to the City of San Marcos. The county also has drones.
And how many drones do we have?
Tiffany, do we have nine?
We have, we got the pop-up drones to have a larger for patrol shift, and then we have pretty larger drones.
Okay, give me a number.
So, a total of probably with the smaller ones, I would say a total of, of twelve.
A quote, for the benefit of the community who can't hear, um, she says that we probably have an estimate number of twelve, to include the small ones, and then, we have several larger ones. The smaller ones are available for every shift. It's not uncommon for, uh, a drone to be popped up in the air, because somebody flees from a traffic stop, et cetera. Um, we also use drones to fly into homes, as you heard testimony earlier, to determine if there's injured, assaulted people inside. Those are the types of things we're using for the small drones, and then, we have a couple of the larger ones.
And we just have seven, I mean, twelve people that can operate those, uh, drones or employees?
She says that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and all of them are split in different shifts? Or are they just in the day shift, night shift, or?
Welcome Commander Tiffany Williams.
Yeah, she, she just explained that, but maybe you didn't hear.
Yeah, I'm sure I did.
Hi, Tiffany Williams, Daysby Patrol Commander. Uh, actually, this is Commander Sam Myers' baby now, but I had just left night, so I do have some knowledge, so I'll see if I can't walk you through it. Go ahead, sir.
My question is, do y'all have, uh, officers that can operate those drones in different shifts?
Yes, sir. They are spread across, but that doesn't mean that you could end up with some officers that are doubled up on some shifts, but they do run across all different assignments and all different shifts.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
So theoretically, there's someone else to operate a drone at any time, assuming it's not already in use someplace else?
Theoretically, allowing for sick leave, vacation, those sorts of things. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have plans to train more folks on drones?
That would be a budgetary consideration, because those twelve folks, as we have found, uh, twelve to be, um, a reasonable number right now, because there's also a cost associated with the training that they must have, uh, that is mandated for you to fa- fly an unmanned aircraft. Um, so, could we add more? Yes, we could, but that would include cost to train that staff, ongoing training.
I was just asking if we plan to.
Not at this point, ma'am.
Okay.
Are they maintained by us or a private contractor, the drones?
So, um, fortunately for us, we do have some very well-experienced drone folks who can do some of the basic maintenance. Um, but if there is a catastrophic, then it does have to go back to whoever, uh, that manufacturer is for those repairs.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Um, I appreciate going back to the slide, because my question's still around, like, what is the county doing to supplement what we're trying to, to do? Um, and so, this, the section that talks about average miles driven, are, are, is that a, is there a particular distance, northbound, southbound? Are there any other cities that also can provide, um, this aid, or is it just San Marcos? Because I know the fire department has that agreement where they can share.
Mutual.
Yeah. The mutual. Is this what we're talking about right here?
Uh, you're talking about of, of all of it. So, yes, does Ha- Hayes County, I'm going to keep it specific to drones for the sake of a, of hopefully clarity in the example. So, Hayes County has their own drones, but when we have a mass SWAT call, which could happen in the county, could happen in San Marcos. And now, those Hayes County assets are coming to San Marcos to help us with, with our issue, and vice versa. Kyle, uh, PD is also represented on that SWAT team, as is Texas State. And so, again, regardless of where that SWAT call happens, all of those combined resources are going to help one another. So, in the drone realm, not only does Hayes County have their own drones, so that they just have something that's simply Hayes County, they can staff that. But when you have a mass, um, much like last night, a hostage situation, that's an all-call, all-hands-on-deck. So, Hayes County's bringing their drones, and we're bringing our drones, so that we can have interior watch, outer watch. You get into a lot of very specific things, um, that to make sure you have enough pilots, and then, you also have enough drones, because you have to do battery swaps, right? They don't have an unlimited battery life. You have all of those assets there to cover also in size of drones and what their capabilities are. It's an all-hands-on-deck, and so, everybody's bringing all of their resources to bear on that instance until we come to a resolution.
Okay. Because I'm seeing a lot, like, the robots, eleven-point-one miles driven. I'm just trying to kind of gauge and I, get an idea of how far we're going out, and I get what you're, I get what you're talking about. But let's use an example of, maybe it's closer to Kyle, maybe it's closer to Buda. Are we driving that far, or is there something that says, wait, no, another agency who's a little bit closer to this call has the equipment, they're capable of assisting, they assist?
That CapCog resource, when you specifically talk about the robot, is assigned to a region. And so, that is the one that we have. And so, that robot, while San Marcos PD, we have been doing the maintenance and running it. There are other folks that are cross-trained. Um, but yes, we will go, if they need that robot, because it is a cog asset, that's actually an agreement to have that asset, so we don't have to purchase it, that we will go to Buda, to Kyle, to out in the county, and bring that robot, if that is a tool that they need for that specific situation.
And in this area, are we the only one that possesses, uh, the robots that you're talking about?
The robot that we're talking about in the drone aspect, that's a very pricey drone. Please don't ask me what the price is on it. I'd have to find out. Um, but yes, there is just that, uh, I believe actually there might be two, but there's one that is a very robust, capable robot, and it is a regional asset, and so, right now, it is housed with us.
Okay. And for the public watching, I just ask all those things to make sure that, um, given our fiscal constraints.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we're not going outside the, the, the area of need, and it's in, it's costing us more. That's, that's the only reason I ask. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, so, on the drones specifically, um, are those drones housed at the PD? Because I know one of the assets of take-home vehicles is that officers don't have to come and move tools into their vehicle, but because of the limited number of drones, I'm assuming officers aren't taking the drones home with them?
The drones are within the police department as, as it relates to the larger ones.
Okay.
As it relates to the smaller ones, eh, eh, these drone pilots have to actually have a formal license called what's, what's called a Part 107 license.
Oh.
So, Tiffany, do you know if those smaller drones are actually taken home?
Yes. Those pop-up drones that we talk about for the quick deployment on patrol or for those callouts, depending on where it might happen, they actually do store them in their patrol units. Um, kept in a very thick, dense foam, all that kind of stuff, to keep them from getting any, um, damage from being shaken around as the vehicle's driving. But absolutely, and that was the purpose behind us, deploying those pop-up drones to those specific officers disseminated across the department, is for that rapid response, to get a drone in the air, to get eyes on things, so that we can get, um, we get more resources to the problem to alleviate that instant, or that incident quicker.
All right. Cool. Cool. Thank you.
Anything else?
Not right now.
Okay. What is, uh, Ms. Garza's got a question, but what is the policy number for the, uh, take-home cars?
Chief Klett, could you give me that number, please?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Garza?
Yeah, I, um, that, that was going to be my question. Uh, specifically, like, the take-home vehicle policy. I know I was sent the policy for, um, external employment. I just was struggling to find the general take, uh, home vehicle policy. And then, my follow-up question there is, do we have a separate, um, aside from the general use vehicle, uh, act, the extra employment and the use of city-owned or leased vehicles policy, like a separate one?
Okay. Um, so, the secondary employment is codified in four-point-six.
Which we'll be talking about shortly.
Right.
But that's, is that secondary employment policy, or is it, is it, um, the, does it break down the use of, not just vehicles, so my, an overall question has been, uh, since twenty-twenty-one, it's just all city-owned equipment, um, uniform, all of that. Um, is, I didn't see it in the policy that I was given that outlines just general external employment, but I could have missed it, because I have been very, um, unavailable to review this stuff.
Okay. And I definitely want to make sure I understand your question. Let me, let me answer the other one. What policy is specific to the operating the vehicles? It's seven-point-one-four. Seven-point-one-four governs vehicle operations. That may have the specificity that you're looking for. If not, let me, or Chief Klett know, and we'll get you whatever you need. If not, let me, or Chief Clatt know, and we'll get you whatever you need.
Secondary employment looks like it's four point six.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have that one.
You got that one, okay.
I guess the where my question is leading is, I, I. Hmm, I'll give an example, maybe it'll be helpful, um, like Harris County Sheriff's Office, um, on, in their, uh, website, where it lists their policies, it says, operation of county vehicles, right? And then it has policy, general use of county vehicles, right? Um, and then it has extra employment and the use of county-owned or leased vehicles. And then it it keeps drilling down further, and so I'm just wondering if we have similar or?
I'm tracking you now. That's exactly where I want to go, but we need your actual formal feedback. If you adopt the proposed rates today for secondary employment, then the policy will be amended to reflect exactly that. It is in theory, because you all have not taken formal action.
When you say the policy, you mean the general use of city vehicles policy?
I can do it either way. We can do a standalone secondary employment. This is what's going to cost the community to to use a PD vehicle. Or we can put it in the existing seven point one four vehicle operation.
Okay. Um, I'll just, like, tee up this question. So one of, one of my concerns that I've expressed in the past has been, like, um, what? Or how do officers understand, or what is codified or written or explained? Is like the procedure that happens when, let's say, you're doing security at Amazon and?
Sorry, is this a secondary employment? Can we close this one out, and then I'll go right back to you first?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll I'll go in advance. I do want to say one thing real quick, just as a note for everybody's benefit. Texas State is not on the Haze County SWAT team, sorry, but earlier, it is not. So, all right, I'm going to move forward to secondary employment, to the mayor's point.
We need to close out the take-home, and I need to get any final concerns or thoughts from council members, and I guess Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez wants to go first.
Well, I don't have to go first, I'm just, I was going to wait till the very end of the presentation, but I'll ask about this if anyone else has anything else. They can go first.
I think Ms. Rodriguez may have something. Go ahead, you've got the floor.
So essentially, my, my question goes back to the seven scenarios that you included, um, of basically the benefit of officers responding to calls either immediately before or after their shift. Um, in those seven scenarios, I noticed only one specifically mentioned self assigning to the call. Um, so I guess my concern goes to, are these officers clearly going back on duty, uh, when when they take the call? Um, and specifically, the Amazon scenario, the officer mentioned something about being able to to complete it while still on secondary employment. Therefore, saving the city money, which leads me to assume that he actually didn't, quote-unquote, clock back in. Um, so my concern would be if, in that situation, if he wasn't actually on duty and something happened while he was working, a traffic collision. Just basically their status of like, is it an on-duty injury? Is it, you know, God forbid, he was struck by a vehicle and killed, would it have been considered an on-duty death if he was working secondary employment at Amazon and just kind of decided to go deal with, uh, with a car accident? So is there a policy that is clearly telling them to go back on duty when they, even if it's just for a couple of minutes, to go deal with something on behalf of the city while working their secondary employment?
So to directly answer your question, you're talking about, are they covered by workers' compensation? Very important question. We've been asking that question a lot of TML. The issues that you're discussing are codified in four point six secondary employment. The direct answer to your question is, if an officer is working secondary employment, I'll stick with your example for consistency, Amazon. And they trip over a curb and bled a knee, workers' comp will not cover them. They are not covered under the city. If, however, they do, and the person who did this is Sergeant Garner Ames, he's the one that actually investigated this crash with injury, he's in this room. When he, when he gets involved, when he arrived on scene and he's taking official law enforcement action, he is back fully covered under that workers' comp. Because he's taken official actions on behalf of his primary employer.
So there's no requirement for him to actually get on the radio and, like, assign himself to?
He would have, he would have done that, because otherwise Dispatch would have sent other officers, and he told them, I'll handle this. On the other ones, they don't specifically cite that in their testimony, but let's take Sergeant Vince Fisher, he's the one that actually pulls over the intoxicated driver. As soon as he gets on the radio, a call sheet is immediately created, he's taking a law enforcement action. He then ultimately assists in getting that driver stopped, and she's arrested for DWI. All of that would be covered, because he's taken official duties.
And?
And I understand that. I I guess my my concern was, are they actually getting on the radio and letting Dispatch know that they're doing this?
Yes, sir. Good question, they are. Absolutely.
And I'm still trying to keep secondary as the next item and finish out just the take-home vehicles. I wish the slide just said, take-home vehicles. I want to get this one closed out. So what other concerns are there, simply on take-home? We're going to talk about secondary employment and probably vehicle use in a moment. What's yours on take-home?
Uh, none currently, but I'm just, point of clarification, we can come back if we do.
Okay. You can always, we can always come back. Do you have anything specific on this one? Okay, are we okay with the current policy? I am.
Yeah.
No, on the take-home?
Right, I I haven't had a chance to sit with, um, I got over the weekend different, um, resources, different examples from other municipalities. And so I express this to, um, Assistant City Manager Lonzo and and City Manager Reyes. Um, yeah, I haven't had a chance to really sit with with the fullness of this presentation, um, nor have I had the capacity to compare those things. I think, like, generally, this has provided a lot of insight that I didn't have. Um, I'm just, like, not comfortable right now just to say that. Like, I'm I'm just, like, not prepared, I'm sorry.
It's fine. Mr. Gonzalez? Okay. Mr. Scott's good with it, I'm good with it. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Um, yeah, I guess I'm good with it, but now I'm confused, because my understanding was the only council action we're taking is whether or not to formally approve this.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
I'm just making sure everybody's got a chance to say whatever they want to say, um.
About the the first part, which is? The take-home, okay. Um, I guess. The take-home vehicle. But we don't have a policy for that.
Well, it's kind of woven into the vehicle policy, kind of, sort of.
It it is. So if you're looking for any snippets as it relates to the vehicles, it's going to be codified in the seven point one four that will get you.
Yeah, okay, so I guess my feedback there is, I I didn't see, and I could be wrong, where it outlines situations, um, that kind of dictate what officers are supposed to do. If they are, um, like, in those scenarios, right, like?
To get a call-out?
Right.
Okay, that's, now, remember, responsiveness to call-outs, responsiveness to duty, it's going to be a whole separate policy. I apologize, we have a lot of policies.
Right.
But to spe- speak directly to your question, on seven point one four, which we will provide to the mayor and council, there's a whole section, Section Four, on assigned vehicle program. All of this is clearly articulated, so we'll give you this.
Yeah, and it would have been nice for it to have been attached, just given that we've.
Yeah.
Been asking for this information for quite a while. Um, and again, I just, I just honestly have not had the capacity to. Sit with it, but, yeah.
Then let me go on to Ms. Rodriguez, then we're going to go to secondary. Did you have something on take-home specifically?
Oh, no, ma'am, I was just saying that if I have additional questions, uh, as it relates, because I am going through the policy now that I've been provided it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll just bring him up if it.
Helpful if it had been in the.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, so let's step on to?
We have one last question, on the take-home specifically.
Okay.
Um, so going back to, like, say, the SWAT team, right? Um, so the officers assigned to SWAT team have take-home vehicles, say they're off on a Saturday. Um, and the officer decides he wants to go to the mall. I'm assuming he wouldn't take his work vehicle on that family outing if he didn't anticipate working that day, correct?
That is correct.
So if he's in his POV at the mall, and there's a SWAT call, he's still having to take his POV home to then switch vehicles into his take-home vehicle?
That is correct.
So essentially, it'd be the same thing as if he were to take his POV to the police department and switch vehicles. How would that be different?
Not a true correlation, because in in the latter scenario, let's say he drives his POV to the PD, he has to go in, he has to find the car, he has to inspect the car, he has to go through the inspection. He has to record the whole transaction.
Right.
Then he has to drive the additional ten point one mile, which was the the average or the median, to the actual call-out. That's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I get it.
Okay, maybe now, sorry. I pulled up the assigned vehicle program. Uh, subsection B, uh, where it talks about assistant chiefs are required or allowed to use the following criteria. So, am I understanding correctly that, so employees with an assigned vehicle who live within fifteen miles do qualify, are able to take their vehicle home?
Not all employees, there has to be a business necessity, so there are several.
So if there is a business necessity, they live within fifteen, they can take it home?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
But in the, in, right beneath that, two and three, talk about, there's a different, uh, standard held for investigators assigned to the narcotics unit. And SWAT or CNT.
Yes, ma'am.
There is no fifteen-minute, or fifteen-mile threshold. It's just anywhere in the county.
That is correct, and Chief Clatt be prepared to speak to narcotics or Chief, uh, Winkenware. SWAT and CNT, I'm aware of two that live, I believe, less than one mile beyond the fifteen. So there, and this policy pre-existed me, SWAT and CNT, crisis negotiation team, uh, I think I have two officers within sixteen miles.
Okay, because the graphic that was shared earlier made it seem like that fifteen-mile threshold was just fifteen miles for everybody. So I I wasn't unaware that there were additional people that live outside of that. Um, did Chief Clatt have anything he wanted to add to that, or?
Uh, no, ma'am, I, the narcotics investigators, uh, is Haze County, because typically they are involved with the Haze County Narcotics Task Force. The force is disbanded, they have a county-wide authority, so that's why I was in there that way.
Okay, and there's two vehicles that are included in that currently?
Um, we have three detectives, second narcotics, four. Okay, right.
Okay, so this policy is just, it's not applicable?
It hasn't been updated to reflect the dissolution of the Narcotics Task Force, that's correct.
Okay, so that's why I mentioned earlier, I asked if they were county employees, because as y'all know, my my mother, okay. Um, so, uh, you said it hasn't been updated to what?
So the, when I first got here, welcome stand in San Marcos, uh, the sheriff calls me and says, hey, we're going to dissolve the Haze County Narcotics Task Force. I didn't even know what the Haze County Narcotics Task Force was, but I got quickly educated. So it was dissolved early twenty twenty-one, I believe. And so right now, you have narcotics officers assigned to San Marcos Narcotics. There is no, task force doesn't exist. So this policy needs to be updated, and we'll do that after we discuss the secondary employment, because we have to change it anyways.
Okay, and then the last little subsection to that, number four, where it says, on-call detectives may take their vehicle home on the days that they are on-call, regardless of the distance from the city limits. Has that been updated, or is that still the same, and if so, how many detectives fall within that category?
Any. I'm being told there are no detectives that live outside the fifteen-mile radius.
So is it the intent of the department to limit it at fifteen regardless?
Great question, fair question. I think my intent would be, you're going to have to give me some discretion if they literally live fifteen point six.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that.
So, yes.
But somewhere around that, is that the intent?
Yeah, I have no desire to increase it.
And then, um, it says, employees living outside the limits of this policy must get permission directly from their immediate supervisor prior to taking vehicles home for any reason. Do we know of any employees that may fit this category?
Employees living outside the city limits, so this policy must get permission directly. I'm not aware of any. Chief?
Uh, Bob Clatt, um, Assistant Chief, that'd be for a very limited circumstance. Say, an officer lives outside a distance, uh, in New Braunfels, and they have training the next day in San Antonio. We would give that employee permission for that limited duration to take that car home, because it's, it furthers than going to San Antonio and not going back and forth. So it'd be a situation like that. It wouldn't be a, a, an ongoing thing for months or or for a long period of time.
But you you would be made aware?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, all right, I think that might be it for now, but I'll continue to go through the policy, and if, just because it's, I just now was made aware.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go to secondary employment, which, for me, is going to maybe elicit a few more questions.
Yes, ma'am. All right, secondary employment. So we are talking about forty-two officers. Now, remember, your current authorized sworn strength is one hundred and twenty-five. So thirty-four percent of sworn personnel work extra jobs, what's codified as secondary employment. Fifty-four are reoccurring in-city jobs, and we've listed what those are. Bobcat Quickie, the Independent School District, the city of San Marcos, Texas State, and Amazon. We also have eight courtesy officers, all within the city, and they provide onsite services at a specific apartment complex.
And that's an agreement between them and the apartment management?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and back to the recurring in-city jobs, if you're having your fifty-year class reunion and a keg of beer, you have to have a police officer at the place. Is that an in-city, just recurring in-city job?
Yes, ma'am, that's part of, that's the reflection of the city of San Marcos.
Okay, because the city of San Marcos isn't paying them, we are.
That is correct, but there is a Parks and Recreation Rule.
Right.
That requires said officer. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, I just, I I wouldn't call that city of San Marcos, but, okay.
Okay.
All right, yeah, please continue.
And then we only have one out-of-city job that necessitates a vehicle, and that is at Promised Land, and it's one point five miles from the city. If you don't know where that is, it's on Lime Kiln Road.
Yeah.
And they necessitate a vehicle because they facilitate traffic to and from the church in between services. All right, there's been a lot of discussion about Amazon. I did not know all of this until we did the deep data dive. They do require a marked unit, that's going to factor into the two rates that we're going to share in a minute. They work, officers work upon request during November and December, occasionally in July for prime days, and then one day in September. The outlet malls, I thought, would be way more often, but they're not. We work there on Black Friday, Boxing Day, and tax-free weekend.
Hey, Chi, real quick, before you switch to the slide, when we say requires a marked unit, is that written in a contract somewhere? Was that a, do we have the terms of agreement? Where was that decided?
I don't think it's a contract that the San Marcos Police Department has with Amazon. Instead, this is, uh, secondary employment facilitated by Danny Arredondo through JPA Traffic Services. So if anything's contractual, it's between Danny and Amazon. He then hires the peace officers to work said employment. One of the stipulations of that employment is, you have to have a car, and there actually is some mutual benefit that we have to recognize, because what is the officer doing? They're out on McCarty, and they're helping with traffic flow for the ingress and the egress of oncoming and off-going employees. That's what they're doing.
Yeah, the intent isn't lost on me.
Okay.
I guess the usage of the word requirement is sort of where I'm 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 at right now. Is required by whom, and where is the terms of agreement? Um, because if this was a contract, as you mentioned it, that was brought by somebody else with a company that then involved us as a third party, that's not really a requirement of the city. That's not a requirement that we agreed upon. That's a requirement that was agreed upon by two other parties. And so do we have a copy of that requirement somewhere, where that's that's outlined, what all went down with that?
Yeah, because people have to be approved to work any secondary employment, correct?
They do. I assign those forms.
Okay.
Um, I don't have a personal copy. I can get a copy and provide it to mayor and council.
Yeah, I guess I'm just lost at why a multi-billion dollar company, one of the largest companies in the world, is getting our help rather than hiring a private security.
Well, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked that. The Transportation Code's pretty specific. A peace officer has the legal authority to control traffic in a roadway, not anybody else. So you can't put a Level Three or et cetera, security guard out on a roadway and legally regulate traffic. Has to be a Texas peace officer pursuant to traffic code.
So you all purely stay in the public area of things versus going on your property?
Yeah, they're facilitating all the incoming, outgoing, and all San Marcos traffic that's going up and down McCarty.
So this is not security, this is traffic control.
This is exactly what it is.
Sometimes they're in the thing, because I, when I've, I I drop off my siblings and their friends, like, all the time.
I don't know.
For like, three years. And I've sent y'all, I've sent Chase pictures. I think what, one of the reasons that sparked the concern was, it was like, okay, what if something crazy happens and they have to, like, go out, they leave, right? Then it's like, what are their, what's their risk, what's their responsibility, like, you know, what if something's happening in Amazon and, you know, I would always get?
You're, you have a great, great point. Secondary employment policy says that if you're working secondary employment. and a critical call drops, your priority reigns with the City of San Marcos, so that's already written in this policy.
I guess that's my question though, is without knowing the terms of agreement that was agreed upon by those two other parties that we were talking about, who's to say, do you know off the top of your head, if that officer leaves per our own policy, is it in violation of the terms of agreement that they were previously under?
Uh, it would be pure speculation on my part, good question, but it, I could, I'd only be speculative.
Yeah, I definitely need a copy of that.
Sure.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Good.
And Chief, I, I guess just for clarification, um, where, so using the Amazon example, um, where there's a requirement for a marked unit, I'm assuming that requirement, I guess, is stated in JPA's broadcast of wanting an officer to work this particular job. Part of the requirement of this officer being assigned that job by JPA is that they bring a marked unit, whether it's a San Marcos PD officer or any of the other outside agencies that JPA employs.
I believe, and it's speculative, that yes, absolutely, exactly what you said. Until we actually all see the contract, again, it's speculative.
And one thing I will be clear about is that, um, we do have policies, not only, the PD has policies for take-home and secondary employment, that's true of all of our city employees, um, and so as part of the budget process, that is one of the things that we were looking at, is not just the PD's take-home policy, we were also looking at all of our take-home, uh, vehicles, and we've asked every department to justify those, and so we're gonna continue to do that every single, um, budget process to make sure that only people who, who have to take those home, and it's usually people that are like, if there's electric workers or water wastewater workers, um, you know, folks of that nature that have, that are on-call, they don't have an assigned vehicle necessarily that they're taking home at all times. It's usually spec, it's usually, um, predicated upon being on-call or things like that, um, with the exception of a few that have, um, to be on-call all the time, some manager-level people. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that y'all knew that we were looking at this more holistically, even though, you know, council's asking about this particular portion, we're, we're looking at things holistically as well.
Right, yes, I think, uh, a member of our community asked, I think it was Mr. Parker, like, why aren't we looking at other, um, employees? And I think, obviously I didn't, I didn't answer him, but, I, at least two times when this was brought up, like, you, you let us know that we're, we are, like, the city is looking at everybody's, um, especially given, uh, where we're at right now with our budget constraints. So, y'all have been doing that work.
I have a question, real quick. Uh, let's say something happens while they're doing these second-duty jobs, uh, who's responsible if there's a lawsuit? Would it come back to the city, or who assumes that responsibility?
I'm gonna defer to our city attorney.
So what kind of lawsuit are you talking about?
Well, let's say a shooting took place, and, uh, he was in the second job, and, uh, who in the other, the people that, the other party decided to sue, who takes that resp, who do they sue, the city or the company that hired them?
Well, a good lawyer is gonna sue everybody, and what will happen, and I'm just being, you know, not joking, but.
No, I understand.
Typically, a lawyer, there may be fault on different levels, and it's not gonna be unusual that they would probably sue various parties and let the party sort out where the liability falls. So, i- I think it just depends on the circumstance, um.
Well, they can sue the city then.
Ab- absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand that, but is, would there be a case here?
Yeah, I guess like, what's the liability for the officer in those situations? Like, when, when things, when the lines get blurred to where it's like, I get in Amazon, they're supposed to be doing like the, the traffic or whatever, but if, if something is happening like on the premises, cause I have seen them parked in, in the middle, which is like the non, like in the parking lot and in the back, um, what, I guess, what, what's, what's the move there, like, but it's like something that would warrant like a police response anyways? But it's like, is it?
I, I know.
It really kinda depends on the circumstance, but if the officer is exercising any degree of discretion as a peace officer, uh, and I'm sorry, it sounds like Stephanie has something.
Well, the only thing that I would wanna get clar- clarified is because what I understand with like workers' comp and some of our liability insurance from TML, just from my HR days, was always that it has to be normal course and scope of your job. And so, I'd, I'd be, I'd be curious to find out if this is considered normal course and scope when it's outside employment. Um, the thing that I think we would be liable for is like the vehicles and things like that, so if, if an accident happened, it would be our insurance that would cover that, correct?
If it's, if it's our vehicle, yes, assuming our insurance, of course.
Right.
Has to extend to that secondary use of the vehicle. Um, but, the other thing, a- and there could be a whole number of scenarios that impact whether, it's very likely we could get sued, the question is whether the suit has merit. But for example, the types of things that could come into play was, um, was our officer qualified? Did they, uh, did, did we provide, you know, was the officer that's assigned to that, uh, assignment through?
Was the vehicle in good condition?
Yeah, there's just, it's just gonna depend, um, how are they representing themselves? Are they representing themselves to be working as a San Marcos police officer, or are they on their private time? And, again, what is their training, uh, did, was there some sort of negligence in their training? I mean, a, a good lawyer, plaintiff's lawyer can have a number of theories that they might try and extend to the city. So for me to say that we have no liability is that probably, uh, I don't think I could go that far. I think we would have defenses, cause they're supposed to be acting outside of their normal job duties, but.
Right, and I just wanna.
There's a lot of factors.
Um, I think everything you just outlined is why, um, I was hoping that what would materialize from this conversation is that we would have, like, I know we have our take-home vehicle policy, um, if we would have one specific for like the, um, unique nature of police response, right? Because that protects us, and that also, um, kind of allows, like, other people to like not get it twisted, like, you know, what, what are you doing and how you represent, you know, like, it, it's like outlined more clearly, like, cause when I look at the current policy, it's just, it's like, oh, it's not very clear. Who, who's doing what, whose lane is what, what permissions are they supposed to get, I don't know. Um, but I do have examples of other entities that, where you can see it better.
I would welcome that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, um, so my question, I'm looking at y'all's policy, uh, as it pertains to secondary employment. Um, I'm not seeing anything on here though, maybe I'm missing it, um, that discusses audits. So like when an individual comes to you, hey Chief, or, you know, maybe even Chief Klett, um, I wanna engage in this secondary employment, here's what I'm gonna do, if it's the, you know, qualifications, you approve it. But, is there any audit actually verifying that the distance they're driving, what they're doing is in fact what they're doing? Do y'all do any of that?
Okay, so let's, let's just pick a specific, okay, HEB, so there's a secondary employment opportunity to HEB. So the peace officer may live in the city, they drive to HEB, they park and they provide a visible presence, and they do all the duties afforded to them from code of criminal procedure. What are you asking me if I'm auditing?
So let's use the, let's use the hypothetical you just brought up, okay? Uh, I'm, I'm doing HEB, um, I've gone exactly where I needed to, that's what I told you I was gonna do. Let's say I diverted from that, I wanted to go to some other places. Do y'all audit to actually see if that person's going to and from, because the data y'all are giving us is to and from? Do y'all make sure that they're in fact just going to and from?
No, I mean, y- y- you know, I'll pick on myself, if it's me, if I'm gonna go work HEB, I'm gonna stop at Chick-fil-A and get my favorite large sweet tea. Um, I, I don't know that an audit would discern that there's a deviation from the mileage, cause I'm stopping right there on the frontage road before I go to HEB. So I wanna directly answer your question, no, we do not. And I think if, if they're not doing the job as billed, then I think it would be complaint-based based upon the retailer saying, we're not gonna hire you anymore.
But that would go to the person that they made arrangements with, not us?
It could go to both, honestly, in fact, I would expect it to go to both.
Okay.
I think I would be informed of it, and I think.
But the entity to resolve it would be whoever has employed them.
No, I think I would own some of that one too, I'm, I'm pretty strict when it comes to performance expectations.
So if, based on that response though, like if you are strict to, to those expectations, is there any way you can show us through an audit though, that your expectations are actually what's happening?
On, n- no, I, I'm, I wanna work with you, I'm trying to understand, I, I get your question.
Because fuel, additional, you know, wear on tires, all of those things have costs.
Sure.
But I can't know that if somebody's doing exactly what they're saying they're doing, if there's not an audit, that's why I'm asking specifically, what are we actually doing to verify that what they're saying they're doing is what, is, is in fact what they're doing?
It's really not so much for me what they're doing, it's what else are they doing on our mileage and tires and stuff?
For sure.
So that's kind of a second question, I'm assuming there's not any of that, but, go back to her question.
I mean, would, would it be something that, I don't know that we proactively have an audit to, to do that. I think that a lot, just like with anything else, a lot of times it's gonna be complaint-based. So if someone's giving us reason, and, and they do it even with city vehicles, if they see a city vehicle, one time we terminated somebody because there was a city vehicle that was, um, uh, parked at a movie theater in Austin, uh, and somebody called it in, and, and so we got that. So, a lot of times it has to be something that is, it wasn't a police vehicle, I wanna make sure that's, that's clear, but it, but it was another vehicle. And so, it is complaint-driven, so, and it is complaint-based, so if we have reason to believe that there, it's not being utilized as authorized, then that is something that we would look at, but we wouldn't just go and look at it, you know, on our own to make sure that, that everybody is doing what they're saying that, what they do, because they got that authorization, and that's acknowledgement, because also if we were to find that they weren't doing what they were supposed to, that'd be grounds to say, you knew the policy, you, you didn't do what you were supposed to do, and this is what it is. But that's assuming they're going somewhere they're not authorized to go.
I guess my question is, let's use the not authorized to go, how do you substantiate that? What are y'all tracking that actually substantiates that? If I'm a citizen, and I see somebody off-duty, let's use an example like that, and I see them doing something that I don't think they're supposed to be doing, and I complain, what actually is out there to substantiate that claim? Do y'all track your mileage, like when an officer goes somewhere, do y'all say, hey, it's at this mileage, and here's where it is when I'm done? Like, what actually verifies?
That, that was a question I have, is do they, do they log the mileage when they start that job and when they return?
They do not log mileage, start and end.
Oh, that's a disappointment.
So there's nothing currently, and, cause I'm, I may be missing it in this policy, cause I just had to skim through, that actually verifies on y'all's end what's happening?
Absent.
Fuel logs.
Fuel logs. Chief Winkenware, come on up.
Yeah. The other thing, Sabas, do they have ABL? Do they have ABL on police vehicles?
Brandon Winkenware, Assistant Chief, uh, Operations, this is actually probably better for fleet, but every time we get gas, the mileage on the cars logged. Uh, Ricky, and y'all still get those reports over there, right? So they get a mileage of how many miles it was traveled and how many, uh, uh, in a given period. Uh, so they have those audit logs, so they're able to see how much fleet's used, they're the ones who give us our mile adjustments each year when we create the budgets. So we have a working number, so we have an expected number of mileage, and we, we haven't gone over that budget yet this year. It's always pretty darn spot-on with what they give us on those estimates. So, their estimates based on what we've done year after year after year, and we keep hitting that. There have been a few years where we've gone over, but generally that's due to price fluctuations in the price of gasoline. So the miles driven are logged every time we get gas on the car. As for specific every day what we're, what we're driving, no. Uh, when you come on duty, you check on duty, you check on duty with the computer, you check on duty whether you're on an extra job or whether you're on, uh, on work for the regular city, so you're always on the CAD, so dispatch always knows when you're at. Cause if something breaks loose at the activity center, which is an extra job for the city, we need to know where you're at to go there and pull you out. So there is some accountability in that computer log that they're logging in where they're at, where they're doing these jobs. Now, I don't think we've got to the part we wanna talk about how much we're gonna charge the guys for using the car, and I think that's a missing piece that we need, if Chief wants to get on that.
And we'll get there, but the other thing.
Mr. Winkenware, real quick though, um, when you talk about the inputting of logs, who actually inputs that log? Like, is it, if I go and fuel, is it the officer who's putting in the number and shares it with y'all, or is it?
The numbers directed to the fleet management system. Every city car does that.
So it's fleet that inputs the logs?
No. It goes to fleet, but every city employee that drives a city vehicle enters that mileage number when they get gas with their employee number.
Okay, and is there any process to verify that number?
Could we ask, Sabas, the other thing I wanted to, to ask, um, I don't know if it's you or Ricky that you want to speak to the question about that in terms of verifying, because if you're wanting to look at it from the sake of, you know, how well a car's running or not, if there's any maintenance that needs to be addressed, the other question is, do police vehicles, these take-home vehicles, do they have ABL? And I'm sorry, I don't remember what the audio, I think it's automatic vehicle locate, do they, do they have that so that if there was something that came in, that was a complaint, would we be able to look at an ABL log to see where they've been?
So, there is ABL, uh, capability, but that's usually when they're on duty and logged in. If there is a complaint, generally we're pretty good about picking out where that car is based on the time and location of that complaint.
Yeah, and to be clear, my question is purely as it relates to the tracking of the vehicles involved in the secondary employment. I definitely understand that when an officer's on-call, there may be various spaces and places that they need to go, that's not lost on me. I'm saying, what do we do to track the vehicles that are being used for the purposes of secondary employment?
Yeah, and that's why I was asking about the, the mileage, just so that we know how many miles, so we can look at the things.
We jumped the gun on the questions, it's in the presentation, we haven't even talked about that yet, so.
Okay.
There's, there's an ability to build that in, but we haven't even talked about it yet, so we probably need to get to that.
No, I'm, I'm aware of what's to come, I know it's part, I, I've, I've read the slides, I know we're gonna be talking about a per-mileage thing, I get that. I'm saying now though, currently, what is currently being done?
Sabas, Sabas, I'm the Director of Public Works. Uh, to answer your question, what is currently occurring now is that each individual with a WEX card has to enter their PIN number into the system and then log, uh, the, uh, mileage on the vehicle. Now, um, uh, if they put in an incorrect, uh, uh, mileage of that vehicle, then what will happen is that we will see some irregularities in the report. Either, uh, we will see that their, uh, their fuel usage has spiked up or spiked down, um, and that's usually an indication that they put in, uh, the wrong mileage for that vehicle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avila.
Okay, hold on.
Um, well, I was gonna ask the question earlier, but it's actually gonna be, I guess, more pertinent after you give this example.
Yeah, let's, let's let him finish, and we'll, we'll say, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor Council. All right, so this is the proposed changes that does require formal coun- uh, council vote. We struggled with what is an equitable rate to charge officers. We didn't believe that we were gonna charge the businesses, because we believed that we need to remain accountable, so we believed it needed to start with the officers. Even Danny Aradondo said, hey, I really think you've got to make sure that the officers are responsible for paying the city back for the use of that fleet vehicle. So, we had a, a, a work session with the City Manager's Office, and I'm gonna give kudos to Assistant City Manager Rodney Gonzalez. We were just hypothesizing, how do you determine a fair and equitable rate? And he proposed, why don't we look at rental car companies? And I knew when he said it, I thought that was a really good idea, because his second point was, rental car companies already consider a profit margin and their maintenance cost. And so when you go to rent a vehicle, from Enterprise as an example, you, whatever you are paying contractually, they are already making money and they're taking care of their maintenance cost. When he said that, I thought, he's on to something, and so staff went to work, thank you to Patty Hom. She was able to pick, uh, and this was a direction from Chief Anderson, hey, I wanna get the regional area, and so we decided that the regional area was from Austin to New Braunfels. Patty was able to assess on the high end, and that's where we went, we didn't go lowball, we went on a high end, full-size SUV. You can rent a full-size SUV akin to a Chevy Tahoe today at Enterprise for a hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. However, the Enterprise offers government a 5% discount. So with the 5% discount, that translates to a hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents a day. They still make their profit, they still cover their maintenance cost. This translates to six dollars and eighty cents per hour, and this is our proposal. We propose that officers be charged six dollars and eighty cents per every hour that the vehicle is used for secondary employment. Keep in mind, there are only two instances, Amazon and Promise Land. But in those cases, when those officers enter their pay period and they have to use their vehicles during the actual secondary employment, they'll be paying six dollars and eighty cents per hour. Now, if the vehicle is not used during the actual secondary employment, and I'll go back to Bobcat Quickie. Bobcat Quickie pays San Marcos police officers to go downtown during the peak hours to forego any instances of crime. When they go there, they'll drive there, they'll park their car, and then they're just a visible presence. They can be in a store, they can be in the parking lot, they can be engaging, et cetera. So the vehicle is not central to that secondary employment. In that case, we still believe that the city should recoup some of those expenses to drive to Bobcat Quickie and then home. And so that's where we drive, okay, well, we would take half of that hourly rate, three dollars and forty cents, as a one-time fee per trip to commute to secondary employment for when a vehicle is not required. So I'm going to start there. I'll explain that last sentence. It's very frequent for San Marcos School Resource Officers to work secondary employment, and I'll just pick basketball games. They work their normal shift, and then the school district wants them to stay over for secondary employment to cover that basketball game. They're not going home and then back to the district. They're just staying there. They'll catch that secondary employment, and then they go home. They would have driven home anyways as part of their work job. So we're, that's what that last sentence says. We're not going to charge the officers if they were going to be in the city-for-city business anyways. So that is the proposal that's before you. Don't think they're, oh, yeah. So I'll, I'll leave it there for just a minute.
Okay. Well, y'all are contemplating, the 680 was based on the Enterprise government, all right, but you said that that has profit and maintenance built in.
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we using that that includes profit?
Because I think to some extent, if these, let's take HEB, we use them as an example. If we are using our police vehicles for an HEB job, then it's going to ultimately lessen the life of that vehicle. So we should recoup some of that profit, because we're going to have to replace the vehicle earlier. So I think not only do you need it for the maintenance, but you also need it to for a sooner replacement. Now, HEB's a poor, poor example, because they don't require a car, but.
And the lease payment that we're making in order to have that vehicle.
Yeah, cause that mileage counts. Okay. Oh, I had to ask that question. Ms. Rodriguez.
Come back to me, my question went off my head.
I don't think I have, okay, this, when you say these are the changes, changes to what? Like where would this go?
Good question. So this would be codified in policy. How does it actually get done? We worked with Director of Finance, John Locke, and his team, and we asked this question. When officers go to do their payroll entries every two weeks in Tyler Munis, can there be two lines so that they input the number of extra work jobs and/or the number of extra hours, et cetera, that they use the vehicle or didn't, they just commuted? They've already figured it out, they've already done a beta test, they worked with IT, so hats off to Finance and IT for getting that done. So to physically answer your question, Councilwoman Garza, we'll do it through Tyler Munis.
I'm so sorry. That's not what you're asking.
That, that's, that's impressive though, that you guys did like the background and the tech of it all, that, you know, the implementation part. The question is, what policy are you proposing that this be?
Would it be added to an existing, or would it be a standalone policy that would encompass that?
And then there's secondary employment, so.
Right. If you, and I, this is what I said earlier, if council wants me to have a complete standalone policy for this, I can. Or if you want this to be reflected in secondary employment, which was, where would normally be housed?
Yeah, right.
I feel it's germane to that.
So I think that this conversation is leading me more towards like a separate policy. There are some good examples, it just like makes it really clear. And this is like take-home, vehicle take-home policy specifically for secondary employment. I just think that it's kind of different, like it's, yeah, there's like unique considerations.
It's not secondary employment, it's not a take-home vehicle, it's take-home vehicle for.
Yeah, it's, it's a different, different, different breed, breed of cat.
So.
Go ahead.
I was going to say Rosenberg Police Department has outlined one, and I was showing the mayor, like. So it doesn't just outline, doesn't just outline kind of the basic things that we went over. It also just specifically outlines things like your example of, you know, stop at Chick-fil-A and get your favorite tea. Like I'm fine with that, like that makes sense to me, like I don't think that that's scandalous and controversial. But even things like that, it's, it's like listed here. This one just talks about eligibility requirements, the vehicle use personal stops. You know, officers may make personal stops or errands during travel to it, and from a work location, police headquarters. So it kind of just makes it a lot more clear. It also outlines contraband transport, you know, how it intersects with your extra-duty employment. Yeah.
We'd be glad to. Chief Klett will look up Rosenberg's. I'll steal every good thing and claim it as our own. So I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, and I, I hope that it's going to be as clear, and the examples that you have given, as in you're already there and you don't have to go anywhere, so that doesn't get charged. And when you do get charged, and the difference between these two, and may just have to give some examples so that it's clear.
Yes, ma'am.
So that all's good when this gets rolled out.
So I have two questions. First, on this specifically. So the two examples you gave was the, the Amazon, Promise Land, that requires a vehicle, and then Bobcat Quickie that doesn't. So in the Bobcat Quickie example, the officer's driving the city-owned vehicle, parking in Bobcat Quickie's parking lot, going inside and essentially providing command presence. And the other two examples, they're parking the vehicle in the middle of the street and conducting traffic. In neither example is the vehicle moving and additional mileage being put on that vehicle. So why is one officer paying for use of the vehicle when the other isn't?
Because the vehicle is, on the latter example, the one that's doing traffic directional McCarty, it's idling with all the emergency equipment on. So those idling hours, I think Ricky would tell you, we put a lot of idling hours on our vehicles. Those deduct from the overall value of the vehicle, so we think we should recoup those idling hours.
So the, the six, okay, so then, a, a third example that I guess we're not currently doing, but if there ever were a secondary employment that required, say, patrol of their parking lot, to where not only, the vehicle's not idling, we're actually putting mileage on the vehicle, would that be then a, a second rate, because now we're putting an additional cost on the vehicle above? I, I just feel like if there's different usage of the vehicles, there should be different scales of what the officer is paying, because they're actually putting a different level of wear and tear on the vehicle.
And I, I, that's a great question, I appreciate it. I think the value behind the initial idea, credit to Rodney Gonzalez, was if this driving or if it's idling, Enterprise is already making a profit and covering their maintenance. So I would not be a proponent of having three different fee structures. Because either way, 680 is for driving, but it also can be for idling. So I would submit to you, I would hope that y'all would consider 680 as a flat fee if the vehicle's being idled or operated.
And speaking of auditing things, is that on their application to do the secondary employment, does it indicate the use of the car?
It does.
And, and whether it's going to be running or not and that kind of stuff? Is that already on there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you. Then somebody can match that up if need be.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, I remember my, my question, two questions. So is there, in y'all's discussion, did y'all discuss the money that's going to be coming from this if my colleagues agree to it? Where does it go? Our general fund, back to the police department?
It, it would go into general fund.
Into the general fund? Okay. And then second, um, Chief, help me understand. Is our policy that officers are to have their body cameras on at all times?
No, not all times. The batteries won't last.
When, when they're out in the public?
Yeah, when you're engaged in a field contact, a traffic stop, a call for service, then the policy does require that the body-worn camera be activated.
Okay, cause I see in the secondary employment, under extra-duty employment subsection M, it says, "When engaging in extra-duty employment, officers are to adhere to all department policies, procedures, rules and regulations, and applicable operational guidelines." So am I correct to assume that that means that they would too have to have their cameras on during that process?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Mayor Council, so staff recommendations, we're almost done. As it relates to the fleet surcharge adoption, we're asking you to formally adopt a six dollar and eighty cent hour for use of the police vehicle. Three dollars and forty cents when it's not used for idling or actual driving around, but instead just for commuting. And then I just put in here, value of take-home vehicles, and then my continued commitment to accountability. So with that, I would ask if, to receive formal guidance. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I'll start this then, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. Oh, sorry. Jump in.
Could we make the decision on whether we want this to be a separate policy as well, or?
Sure, let's do that.
Yeah. Or I don't know if that needs to be asked at the same time or separate, but.
I'm going to ask 680, 340, separate policy. I'll be asking three questions, you can do them all at once. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, on all three.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
I'm really kind of against the whole thing. I think that the police department is doing a fine job, and I really don't care about what's going on right now with this charging fees. I think it's ridiculous, and I'm not even answering that questions.
I'll put you down as a no.
That works too.
I'm a yes with all the recommendations. Ms. Garcia?
As proposed, the, the fees, I guess, make sense. I, I think my primary concern that I've been expressing since the beginning has just been like a lack of, like, clear policy on the use. So my stronger yes is, is on like a separate policy.
Yes, ma'am.
I wrote the Y down as a capital. Yes, ma'am. All right. Mr. Saug Gonzalez? It's the 680, the 340, and suggesting a separate policy.
The separate policy doesn't matter to me, whatever works for y'all guys. As for the fees, I'm, I'm kind of on the same page with Councilman Shane. But I guess I'm going to, well, the officers okay with this agreement when y'all talk about? No, of course not, they took money out of their pocket.
In fairness, the officers were not polled as to where they stand on this issue. I think it is an equity issue. I think the city needs to recoup some of these expenses.
Okay. Then, then I'm okay with it.
Your yeses, okay, on those two. Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, I'm a yes to everything. My question earlier about like the auditing and tracking purposes, it's also like a save y'all too, because let's say a complaint comes in. They're saying, hey, I saw an officer here, he was doing this, he was doing that. Come to find out, we look at the data that we're tracking, they were not there, you know, so it benefits both sides. It lets us know these vehicles are being used appropriately, and it lets y'all have that coverage to know, okay, you, we can't substantiate this because of X. So.
So I, I think I can meet you where you want to be. My staff, you can't hang me for after and said this. We can require as a condition of secondary employment, when the vehicle is going to be required, that they log into computer-rated dispatch CAD, which then gives them access to the ABL, which was City Manager Reyes talked about, automatic vehicle locator. So that we could, in fact, complaint-based, audit exactly where they were in that car.
Yep. Yeah, that's fine with me, and we can talk further about it when that discussion comes back. But that was sort of the intent around me providing that, that question. So yes to, to all of them.
All right. I think we have come to conclusion.
And Mayor, I guess I just have one point to the 680, 340 aspect. And I know that's something that needs to be brought up now, but is there any way we can put some sort of reviewing those numbers with inflation essentially, so whether it's reviewed annually, semi-annually, or biannually?
It's not going to be in an ordinance where we would have to vote on it again. I assume that y'all will keep track of that and, and let us know. But honestly, that's not something I feel I need to be deciding on. If y'all think it needs to be seven, or it goes down to 650, I don't know that that's, it's, it's going to be based on something I'm probably going to agree with. So I don't know that that needs to come back to us.
Well, and, and that was, that was my reason for asking for that. So rather than every time it changing, it having to come back to us, can we put something, whatever the, the metrics was to come up with this, if it's tied to Enterprise's cost for a mid-sized vehicle, whatever. So semi-annually, we'll go and find what Enterprise's cost for a semi, or whatever, mid-sized, whatever, and it just changes automatically without having to take count action.
That's what I mean. I'm agreeing with their methodology now, so I would probably agree whether it goes up or down.
Yeah, but I guess my, my request is to codify that in whatever it is we're doing, so that future councils don't want to go and have to change it.
We can absolutely do that. So it, it's, it's an operational department policy, and so the direction that you provided today would be an operational policy that the chief would put together. And we could have in there some language, if the council is, is good with that, just saying that it will be reviewed annually or semi-annually, whatever it is that we want to do, just like we do with our mileage reimbursements and those kinds of things. We look at the different rates. So we would use similar language in that, in that policy.
One other question, I'm just curious. What's the average pay for the secondary job for an officer?
That's a great question, Councilman, and I have learned that there's, it's like a lawyer answer, it depends. Danny Aradondo, many of you know him, he explained it best by saying, Chief, it's normally, let's say it's a $60 fee. But if they contact me tomorrow night and say, I need an officer tomorrow, I'm not going to charge them $60. I'm going to charge them maybe $80 or $90. And it's up to the entity whether or not they receive that proposed rate. So it's not a steadfast answer.
Right. I mean, that makes sense, yeah. Generally, I assume this is the younger, lesser-paid folks who are taking second jobs.
That's not right. No.
Now, what is codified is in Meet and Confer, where it talks about what an officer is paid when renting a city facility, and somebody, a member of the public is responsible. There is a set rate that's in there that says, I don't know, $50 an hour, or it may be a little bit different. But I know it started out, it was one, and it has gone up over the last several contracts.
One real quick note, I just got this text, thank you Sergeant Garner Ames. This is going to address your concerns, Councilwoman. Cradle Point GPS tracks the vehicle anytime it's on, regardless whether or not the computer is on or signed into. So we can actually do audit based upon Cradle Point GPS's today.
Oh, I, I figured the data was out there. My, my question was more so, what are y'all doing with that data? And if, I, I know in other policies that we have, there is an annual audit that's normally in these policies. My ask is that that be considered when we talk about this one in the future. And just to, to put a reminder, I don't know if it's city staff or y'all's department, I really want to see the terms of agreement when it came, when it comes to some of these secondary employments, especially the ones that have been worked out by outside parties.
That kind of is on, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Just to make sure and recap, and, and thank you for the great discussion. I think there's been excellent discussion and, and some, and some great progress made. So a copy of the agreement between JPA and Amazon, they would like that. The take-home policy for police response, I want to make sure, like whose lane is what, but also making sure that we're looking at how we do that specific policy for take-homes, for secondary employment specifically. We're going to look at some other cities. I know Rosenberg was one of those cited. And then we're going to look at what we include in terms of regular review of the rate, and then also going to look at how we have the accountability piece in terms of verifying where vehicles are whenever they're out in the field, whether it's secondary or, or within our normal city operations. Did I capture everything?
Yeah.
The, the only request I would ask a little bit for specificity is, we're required, because we're an accredited agency, because we're an accredited agency, to review all policies every year. Are you okay with us doing that fee review annually? Because it's gonna require a whole change in the policy every time we change it. So are you okay once every year? Okay.
Put it in the regular routine.
Can I make this effective August 1st? Because the businesses that are gonna now be paying these fees are gonna want to know that the officers may be passing these off costs on, et cetera. Give me an operational date to make this effective, please.
As it relates to the effective date, do we have an idea when this is coming back?
Right. This won't be coming back.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, it's not an ordinance to vote on.
Oh. No, I understand that, but we've had previous discussions as it relates to internal policy.
Yeah.
For the, so I guess I was under the assumption that this was coming back, and we would see the results of the work.
Can I suggest that when it's done, that it be sent to all of us? And same process as always, if at least two council members want to put it back on the agenda, then it goes back. If we're all happy with it, then it doesn't need to come back and take time.
We can, we can absolutely disseminate it to all of y'all. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I just wanted to avoid the, let's say, it goes, the effective date is in fact decided, and council has an issue, and y'all have to go through this process again. I was just trying to see if we could get our eyes on it, especially given the council considerations prior to that effective date.
I, I was kind of thinking it might be budget year, October 1.
Right. I guess, given that this had not been reviewed since, what was it, 1492? Just kidding. Whatever year that was on there. I, I don't know why I was under the impression we were gonna see it again. I do think that there's, like, a lot of areas of growth when it comes to, or ways to improve, like, a more clear policy. I don't know, yeah, and now I'm just like, okay, so you're gonna make a draft of a separate policy?
Yes, ma'am.
To include other...
Good ideas from other places?
Right, but...
Follow y'all's direction.
We're, when you say follow y'all's direction, the thing is, like, we haven't, like, discussed, like, what those other things are. Like, there's, like I said, there's, like, multiple different cities. So I guess I could just, like, send you that, and then...
I, I think what we were hoping is that these are the ingredients that go into creating the policy. And so these are the decisions as far as the rate, making sure that we are able to talk about the fact of what the expectations are, you know, when they're using those things and all that. So everything that y'all have talked about today will be the ingredients that form the basis of the policy that is drafted.
Right. And like, I want, I want to name that I have, I think a lot of conversations I've had with Chief have been productive, in particular, like, back and forth about, like, mental health policy and all of that. But for this topic in particular, like, I wanna trust fall into y'all's arms, right? But the fact that it's taken this long, and the fact that it hadn't been reviewed in such a long time, I'm just gonna name that if y'all give me a draft of a whack policy, I'm gonna be so mad. Like, I wanna trust fall based off of, like, our productive conversations that we've had, like, in, like, the recent, like, year. But, I mean, sometimes when I trust fall into y'all's arms, y'all don't catch me. And it really infuriates me.
That's, that's not, I mean, we want to, we will send it to y'all. Y'all will look at it. You will see it. If there's something that you have feedback on that you want us to do differently, then we'll take that feedback, you know? I mean, because this isn't, I want to only correct one thing, is that I don't, I don't know that we even have this policy to review. There has not been a policy. So this is creating one anew. It's reviewing the practice, you know, and it's, and it's reviewing how we've done the practice with it, and that's having nothing codified. And so, yes, we're starting something anew. It's something fresh. However, it, there are existing policies that we will utilize from other agencies with your direction that you've provided, to provide the basis of that policy, and then send it to y'all to, to review before it goes into effect.
And, and I'm willing to trust fall. I just, I want to name again, like, even the fact that I didn't get the policy that I had requested, which was like the existing policy regarding external employment and the vehicle use in general, like, I didn't get that till, like, what, like, last week, or like, the other day?
Lonzo sent it over.
Yeah, it's, it's things like that that, that frustrate me. And also
Understood.
It was only sent to me, right? And while usually I'm a nerd, and I go and, like, look line by line, à la Jane, you know, this period's missing, right? I couldn't do it this time. And so it's kind of a bummer that, like, my colleagues didn't get that. And you would think that y'all would have sent that to everybody, right? So like, but still, I get it, I'm gonna trust fall, but I'm just saying, like...
No, that's fair. That, that's...
My grace is at all time low.
And I'll, I'll professionally apologize that you got us so delinquent. I do want to provide a caveat. Our policies are on the website. Everyone of them are available.
But it's, it's like, difficult, because in the past, I mean, I've asked for things, and it's like, no, it's not in the munich code. It's actually an internal thing that's, like, online that we haven't updated in forever. But I will acknowledge, you, at one point, when there was another issue like that, you went, and I think you were like, oh, I'm going through a whole stack. Like, I got a whole stack of policy, then I'm, da, 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 my bad, it, you know, hasn't been uploaded. Like, I know that things are in progress, but having to explain that to my constituents is not super sexy, right? Like, sorry, they're, you know, it's lost in the procedural sauce, right? Like, it's not, it's, it's...
Yeah. But they, it would have been really helpful if it had been in the packet, because it would have been here for us, it would have been here for the public. That was...
And Mayor, I'll apologize for that. There's a hyperlink on the PowerPoint that actually took you directly to the policy, but I don't know that anybody knew that that was a hyperlink. You just presumed it was blue and underlined.
I, I, that's not good enough for me. I'm sorry.
I apologize, ma'am.
They're only four pages, seven pages, so they should have been in here.
Yeah, and a good example of that is like when we had our charter review, they included the charter attached. And it helps you, when you're going through the packet, kind of go through. And the reason for my question is because I would really like us to prevent from coming back, but I know my colleague, if you have issues, you're going to bring us back. So that's why I was asking sort of the review.
Yeah.
As to avoid that.
And I'm, I'm kind of on the same page. It, it sounds like there's at least two of us that would possibly want to review a future policy. Could we just put it on the agenda?
Let's do it and move on, because we've got four things for executive session, and we're not gonna get to all of them. So we really do need to figure out what we're gonna do and move on. So let's just put it on, please.
Yeah, that's fine. On another work session.
Yeah, I mean, and Chief, I'm assuming you suggested on August 1, effective date, that you plan on doing this sooner than later. So I mean, so can it be put on the July work session?
You've got a lot of work sessions already scheduled, so that, it may have to be later.
Okay.
So we could get this in effect earlier. And what I was gonna suggest, if you didn't want to, if, if, you know, again, just trying to think of suggestions, if you say, okay, this is gonna go into effect, and it's, if we don't hear anything from y'all within so many days, then it goes into effect, you know? And if not, then we would bring something back if y'all wanted to talk about something. If there's stuff that y'all didn't like, that would be another way.
It could go on consent. If we won't pull it, we'll pull it.
But council doesn't typically approve departmental policies, and that's take, that's, that's a different thing. That's why I'm asking if it's a work session, because a work session is then you're just giving direction to staff.
Then let's do work session, but let's do something so we can close this out, because we have other things to do.
Yeah, because my concern is that if we bring it back and we follow the typical process, then two members have to, and then it has to come in front of one meeting, and then four have to agree with the two, and then it's gonna be another six months before we can actually make the policy effective.
Like our appointee evaluations. That, that's the only thing that I'm saying. I'm fine with it. We don't have a problem with bringing it back. All I'm saying is that if we don't get through some of these things, we're gonna continue to backlog you. And that's why your meetings have been so long, is because we're not getting through all the stuff, because we keep going through the same thing. So that's the only thing. That's the only thing that I'm saying. I'm, my effort is not because I don't want to bring something back to you. I do, I just know what's ahead of us. We've got the data center that's gonna have a lot of public hearing commentary. You've got your budget that's gonna come up. And so that's the only reason why I'm bringing those things forward. It's council's prerogative, however y'all would like to handle that.
We, I think we've got a majority saying we want to see it again.
Okay, we'll, we'll put it back on a work session.
When it's done, and my expectation is not the July meeting.
Okay. It'll be, it will look at it for work session.
It'll be September.
We'll do it as soon as it's available. I mean, we're gonna work on it immediately because we, we want to recoup the cost, too.
Yes.
And, and so we want it, we want that to be done in a, in a quick manner.
So just an idea, but is there any way we could work backwards? So if we're shooting for September, we're shooting for September. But if Chief has the policy written before the end of the month, stick with the original idea, send it out to everyone. If we all see it and agree that we like it, then we could just remove it from the September.
I was, I was just gonna say that. It will be sent to us. Don't wait for that agenda. Go ahead and send it to us when it's ready.
But I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing, put it on the agenda, and then I'm hearing, go ahead and send it out.
Send it out to us.
Well, I'm saying, put it on the agenda so it doesn't...
And if we have issues, whether it goes on an agenda.
Mayor, I'm just trying to get clarity, because when y'all are all saying different things, I don't, I don't want to do the wrong thing. That's all.
I'm essentially saying, put it on agenda so that we could, because we know how long it takes to set something on an agenda, so reserve a spot for it now. But as soon as the policy is ready, go ahead and send it out. If none of us have an issue with it, then we can remove it from the future agenda.
That's not a process that's
That, that's my point.
That's not likely to happen. It's just realistic.
Let's just do the work session, because, and that, that's where I'm getting confused.
But still
Sorry.
Please don't wait until the agenda, the work session. Send it to us when it's ready.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm clear on that. It was, it was the second part that I was getting confused on, because who makes that call? If you can't for work out, operate outside of a posted agenda, then how am I gonna get that direction? So that's, that's where my confusion is.
So that's where we are. It's gonna come back on a work session, and I'm gonna close this out, because we have other things we have got to do.
Thank you, Chief.
So for people in the audience, hang on. You've just gotta read the executive session stuff and go into executive session. Please, not a lot of noise as you exit, because we're almost there. Ms. Trevino, deep breath, sip of water, and here we go.
All right. The city council convenes executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, section 551.072, real property, and 551.087, economic development to deliberate regarding possible economic development incentives for project AVSM. B, section 551.087, economic development to deliberate regarding possible economic development incentives for project Cat Tree. C, section 551.072, real property to deliberate the acquisition of necessary real property interest related to the installation of a new wastewater treatment plant southeast of the city. D, section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate roles and responsibilities of the city council regarding appointee evaluation process.
I need a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Are we push-button these?
No, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody said aye. Okay, folks, you've got three minutes to do what you need to do and be in the large conference room. I'm hoping our dinner's there, and it's probably really cold. From our executive session, which we ended at 5:50, and at this point, we have Q and A, two people. Is Shannon Brown here? Is she remote? In the meantime, Mr. Baker will speak. You've got, the entire time that you have is three minutes. That's it.
Right. Yay. Am I on? Am I live? Cool. Yeah, my name is Maxwell Baker. I wanted to start by talking about the appointee evaluation process, which was part of your executive session. When the Civic, San Marcos Civics Club first started, we, our mission is transparency, access, and accountability, right? And we approached the city manager about the appointee evaluation process, who is one of those appointees. And we asked, why are these not more public? You all are each given like a scorecard, you rank them, and then you turn around and you identify goals for the next year. And that's how accountability is created, is the community knowing what those goals are. And we have not. We don't know. When we look at the website for each one of those appointees, it just says what their job duties are, but it doesn't say how well they did year to year. And today, we saw that, again, our packet is insufficient. Whose accountability is that? Is it the city managers? Is it the mayors? Is it our clerk? The city attorney, who should be reviewing these policies and making sure that the germane ones are there? So my question is, will you all move to make that more accessible, as you did with the San Marcos Civics Club draft agendas? You all worked with us to create something that's getting us to us 10 days in advance, as opposed to just the three days, and we've really appreciated that. We're asking that you do the same with your appointee evaluations. I also wanted to ask, Mayor, in the last city council meeting regarding the ceasefire, and I, I am asking you because Mr. Mendoza is apparently not here, I was disappointed in the way you chose to run the meeting. You, in every meeting, say to us, the audience, and I assume that this applies to council as well, that we should not curse and use vulgarities. At the risk of being silenced and thrown out of here, I will not repeat the A, C, and S word that Councilmember Mendoza said from the dais, which typically in, like, C-span rules, reporters can say words that are foul on, on media when elected officials say them. When I was on city council, I was silenced in the middle of a meeting on Zoom for not even using any vulgarities, but for apparently being smarmy to you. So I ask you, Mayor, why did you choose not to reprimand or admonish the behavior of Councilmember Mendoza during that meeting, when it is your job to run that meeting in such a way? And I would almost bet money that if any speaker, like myself or others during citizen comment, used those same words, you would ask us to stop and leave, as you say, it's, this is your warning. And in one of the instances, when Mr. Mendoza said, you know, the S word, again, trying not to get myself removed here, it was even premeditated. He was like, oh, and forgive my French, right? It wasn't like a slip of the tongue. He lined up a statement that said, "I'm about to cuss and break council decorum." So, Mayor, it has, it has not been my experience that I'm getting a lot of answers to these questions. You said that normally you will email them to us if they are not answered in the meeting. That has not been happening. You all have my email. I've asked several questions at most of our meetings, and I look forward to a response today, hopefully right now.
Email.
Great.
Okay. Did our other person, is she online? Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Let's call roll.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez or...
That was Saul Gonzalez.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Saul Gonzalez. Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes 5:22 with two absent.
And we are out at 5:56, and we will be back at 6 o'clock.